I'm going to welcome everybody to the January 8th, 2024 meeting of the Select Board. Could you please join, rise and join me in the flexible meetings? Okay, thank you. And first on our agenda is public service announcements.
Okay, so first up, we have the 2024 Annual Town Election Open Offices. For townwide offices, there are two Select Board member seats available for three years, one school committee seat for three years, three Planning Board members for three years, one Planning Board Associate Member for one year, one Board of Health member for three years, two Trustees of the Public Library members for three years, and one Cemetery Commission member for three years. There are also a number of town meeting representative positions open. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Friday, February 9th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. and the last day to file the registration papers with the Board of Registars is Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Next up from the Board of Health, the January dates for free Narcan training by the Chelmsford Health Department are January 9th at 6:00 p.m. or January 26th at 10:00 a.m. in the Town Hall in the Fire Department Training Room Lower Level. This is open to all and you can register at www.chelmsfordma.gov. If you have questions, you can call the Health Department at 978-250-5241 and registration is required because there is limited space. Next up, also sponsored by the Chelmsford Health Department and in cooperation with the Greater Lowell Health Alliance, is one in a series of multiple talks about mental health. This one is "Let's Talk About the A Word," where John Matalman will be addressing anxiety. And this talk is targeted for teens and adults. There is a QR code that you can scan for information and to register, and this will be Tuesday, January 16th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Chelmsford Library. Next, the Health Department is providing a depression and anxiety support group with a licensed social worker. The group provides support to individuals 18 years and older, and they provide both snacks and a safe space to talk about depression and anxiety concerns and issues. If you have more information, you can email mcameron@chelmsfordma.gov or call 978-250-5241. The meetings are every fourth Tuesday of the month from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts Cabaret Room. The Chelmsford Police Department Community Wellness and Engagement Division, along with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and the Chelmsford Senior Center, are providing a Hate Crimes Hate Incidents Forum with Middlesex District Attorney Marion Ryan. It is Thursday, January 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Senior Center at 75 Groton Road. And for more information, you can contact Sergeant Dan Goguen, D-G-O-G-U-E-N, at chelmsfordma.gov. I do, but I believe Chief, oh, is going to speak to the safe passing one.
Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be here. Just want to take a moment to talk about the new safe passing law. It went into effect April 1st, 2023, and we're going to start pushing it out through social media as far as you're starting to see the signs appear in town, probably approximately 10 signs so far. And basically what the law means is that you have to stay four feet away from somebody that is on the side of the road, whether they are walking, biking, if they are utilizing a motorized wheelchair or a regular wheelchair, and the public has to stay four feet away from the person as they are passing. And you are allowed, as part of the law, to go over a double solid line, as long as it's safe to do so, and you have to obey the speed limit as you're doing it. So that is pretty much what the law, to summarize the law, and if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer any of them. As I said, we'll be pushing out through our social media page as far as these signs, probably, like I said, probably about 10. There's two on North Road. I believe there's one on.
There's at least six on Acton Road.
Yeah, Acton Road is another big road that, so I think it's very important. I think it's a, I think it'll be great once people abide by it. So, and then if anybody has any questions?
Thank you. And the last public service announcement is from the Chelmsford Senior Center. Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank has provided a generous donation that is enabling the Senior Center to offer free classes to all members of the Senior Center for the months of January, February, and March. The classes include painting, zumba, chair yoga, line dancing, muscle conditioning, Tai Chi, and sit and get fit. The details will also be in the Chelmsford Senior Center newsletter, and if you have any further questions, you can call them at 978-251-0533.
Okay, thank you. Next up is public input. Is there anybody here in person that would like to speak? And I just want to remind everybody, last time I gave everyone a little bit of a leeway, but I am going to keep to the three minute time limit this evening.
Good evening. Chris Bowman, Precinct 10, Representative 3 Julio Street. And I have handout for the Select Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, um, on the agenda for tonight is for the Select Board to entertain two proposals for resolution by the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which is seeking adoption by the Select Board. There is a fundamental problem with this. As you know, the Select Board is in public service to the people of Chelmsford exclusively under the Home Rule Charter, which is considered the Constitution of the town and embodies the state in U.S. Constitutions, all of which spell out the rights of the people. Now, the MMA is an outside organization. It's a non-governmental entity composed of various governmental officials, elected and non-elected, with their own structure and their own objectives, goals, and agenda for the benefit of those government officials, acting on their own behalf, not on behalf of the people. Because of this, the MMA is functioning as and is a lobbyist organization, attempting to influence the Select Board unduly as the chief policymaker of the town. And this is spelled out in, the Select Board being the chief policymaker is spelled out in the Home Rule Charter, as you know. So entertaining lobbyist agendas is contrary to the Home Rule Charter, is contrary to the rights of the people, and contrary to the Select Board oath of office. The Select Board works for the people of this town, not the state, not any organization, and not any group. So these two proposals must be denied outright and rejected by the Select Board, and this type of, these type of things must be prevented in the future. Again, the Select Board is in service to the people of Chelmsford exclusively, period. And honestly, we deserve better from the Select Board in proactively supporting, protecting, and defending the rights of the people under the Home Rule Charter and the state in U.S. Constitutions. There was no discussion whatsoever in the agenda as to the purpose of them being here in the first place, what the Select Board reasoning is, and how they intend to use it. But adoption, in total, by resolution, is adopting the agenda of this lobbyist organization and is out of bounds as far as the powers and duties of the Select Board under the Home Rule Charter.
Because you have 15 seconds.
Three minutes?
15 seconds.
Okay, so that worked out well. That's pretty much where I'm going to stop.
Okay.
And I thank you very much for listening, and I hope you take this to heart because that's how it was written. Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Rep. 15 Jesse Road is my address. I appreciate the Chief's comment about the, he's calling it the safe passing law. My wife was just about, had almost a front-end accident yesterday on Turnpike Road. There's a couple of these signs there. They're brand new to us, and a car had crossed over the double yellow line coming straight at her in an unsafe manner, to your, to your challenge. And that was frightening. I saw the signs on Mill Road. If you go four feet across, if somebody's on Mill Road and you come four feet across that yellow line, you're going to hit somebody coming head-on. So although I appreciate the fact that the bikes and walkers, kid in a wheelchair, we walk on Turnpike, and it's terrifying. We have to dive off the road when people come by at 40, 50 miles an hour there. I would rather put other kinds of signs up, and I'd rather spend some money on some sidewalks rather than the signs. The state certainly has lots of laws, but putting signs up is confusing the motorists to think that the car is not as dangerous as the bike that isn't there, that it's not many on Turnpike that I've seen hit, seen more cars hit telephone poles on Turnpike. So I'm, I'm kind of advocating for being very cautious about putting a whole bunch of these around before we see accidents of bikes getting hit. I haven't seen any on Turnpike at all. That was kind of a side note to my other topic. I'd rather see some paint on the 110 exit off 495 onto 110. We have not painted yellow or white lines. There's a fog line on the right, yellow on the left. And again, my wife was almost hit with a head-on accident two years ago, car coming up the off-ramp onto 495. If you can't, if you don't notice the color change and you come up because there's two arrows pointing up the off-ramp, because the state hasn't painted the triangular-shaped yield lines at the bottom of the 110 exit, next time you're there, you'll see it, tire marks have worn out four out of the six triangles. So the triangles are pointing in the wrong direction, really stupid European-style paint design. If you don't paint it every year, those several triangle-shaped lines turn into arrows pointing the wrong way. And when you don't have a yellow line on, on one side and a white line on the other side, you have no idea you're going up the wrong path there. So I would rather see us having the state spend money on painting on ramp, off-ramps and keeping our, our safety of our cars going 50, 60, 70, 80 miles an hour rather than a bike.
You have 15 seconds left.
Thank you. Storage containers, are these taxed? Walmart has four or five storage containers out the back. Are they taxed at the same rate as the warehouse floor? On, on, at 84 Turnpike, there are also storage containers stored outside the building, which they're not allowed in IA District. There are two there that have been there forever.
Okay, your three minutes are up, Brian.
Thank you. And if I could, snow easement. We had a letter come from the DPW that gives policies saying they can run over my lawn this year. Not happy about that. If they have an easement for snow removal onto my lawn that allows them to damage the, the sprinklers and, and come up to four to six feet onto the lawn.
Brian, your time is up.
Understood. Then they need to pave the end of my driveway. Thank you.
Okay, looks like nobody else here in the room, and I know we do have somebody on, on Zoom. Is that correct?
Yeah, Philip Iliopoulos has joined us by Zoom and has his hand raised.
Okay, Philip, if you'd like, you have your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. Happy New Year to everybody. For the record, my name's Philip Iliopoulos. I'm an attorney here in Chelmsford with offices at 9 North Road. Wanted to give the board some color on an agenda item they'll be discussing later in the evening. I've been chatting with the two Pauls, Paul Haverty and Paul Cohen, over the last couple of months about the moratorium for the all-alcohol liquor license that's available. The reason I've been inquiring about it is because of the location that Joe Ready owns up in Vinyl Square, at 11 Vinyl Square. As you may know, he used to own and operate a liquor store there. He sold it in 2000, and it, the buyer of that store closed it down about a year later. So about late 2001, I believe, it closed down. Their plan was to move that license down the street, but to date, they haven't opened. So originally, the, the town had seven licenses available. Currently, there are six liquor stores operating in Chelmsford. And so the purpose of my appearance today is to advocate for the board to release the moratorium and, and let that license become available. Joe has two parties that are interested in renting 11 Vinyl Square. Their plan was to open a beer and wine and request from the town just a beer and wine license, which is available currently. There are several available in town. But North Chelmsford really does not have service right now in terms of alcohol liquor stores. The closest one really is in Drum Hill. And so what we would request, if the board does list the moratorium, our plan is to apply instead of just for beer and wine, for a full liquor license for that location. It's a small location. It was a great little store that Joe Ready ran, was mainly craft beer and wine with some liquor as well offerings. And that's a very similar plan that the current prospective tenants are looking to do there. They've got great experience. They own two liquor stores currently, one in Burlington and one in Woburn. They're Tippin-Tam certified. They've been in the, the business for about six years. So they've got a good, a good potential business that's looking to move into town. And like I said, they'll, they'll either apply for a beer and wine with the board, or if the board does release the moratorium, they'll apply for the full liquor.
Philip, your.
Instead of six stores, oh, sorry.
10 seconds.
Okay, instead of six stores, we'll be back up to seven. So I just wanted to provide some color for the board's discussion later on as to why that issue has kind of surfaced.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Paul, do we have anybody else on Zoom?
There's no one else indicating on Zoom.
Okay, we're to committee vacancies.
Okay, these are the existing committee vacancies as of today. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term available. The Board of Appeals has an associate member for one one-year term. Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has one unexpired three-year term available. The Commission on Disabilities has two unexpired three-year terms ending June 30th of 2024 and one ending June 30th of 2025, as well as one three-year term. The Community Action Program Committee has one unexpired three-year term. The Council on Aging has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term available. The Council on Aging has two positions open. The Holiday Decorating Committee has one unexpired one-year term open. The Parade Committee welcomes all applicants for one-year terms. The Robertsfield Advisory Committee has two unexpired three-year term positions open, and the Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term position open. If you're interested in serving on a town board or committee, please complete an online application available on the town website. Or for more information, you can contact the town manager's office at 978-250-5202 or tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Okay, thank you. Next up is, we have a couple of one-day licenses for St. Saint's Vartanen's Church. We do have somebody on Zoom.
Yeah, Bruce is on the Zoom call this evening. He's turning his camera on.
Okay.
Hello?
Bruce, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about your events?
Yes, we have actually two events coming up. One of the events is what we call a Pumpa Gentan. It's the Armenian Mardi Gras, if you will, the event before Lent. So that is on February 10th. And the second event is, one of our parishioners is having a baptism where they would like to have a party, a little party afterwards with some alcohol. So those are the two events that we're asking about.
Does anybody have any questions for Bruce about his license applications? Okay, we'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the one-day all alcoholic, all alcoholic beverage licenses for St. Vartanen's Armenian Church at 180 Old Westford Road for February 10th, 2024, and April 20th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion. Give me a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, 4-0. Good luck, Bruce.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks. Okay, with two reports and presentations, and first up is our Council Paul Haverty will talk to us about the citizen, the request for the citizen petition, the citizen petition on the ballot, on the town ballot. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Paul Haverty, Town Council, I did review your last meeting. I reviewed the video from that. I have reviewed what was submitted into the record from that meeting, and I, and I did have some concerns with what was submitted. I, I saw that Ms. Bowman submitted a, a letter in which she argued that a recent decision from the Worcester Superior Court made a determination that there was an opt-out provision to the MBTA community statute. That's in fact directly contrary to what the Superior Court decision states. In fact, the Superior Court decision stated, quoting, quoting an advisory opinion from the Attorney General's Office, stated that Section 3A does not provide a mechanism for MBTA communities to opt out. So that seems pretty clear to me that there is no opt-out provision. Question as to what the enforcement mechanisms are that are available. I did submit a letter back in early December that talks about what the Attorney General's Office had determined, what, what remedies were available. And they said that communities that fail to comply also risk liability under federal and state fair housing laws. So in addition to the funding sources that are specifically enumerated in the statute, there is also potential liability under federal and state fair housing laws. The Attorney General's Office would be the entity that would impose that. So those are the potential downfalls to failure to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. I also looked at the additional provisions in Ms. Bowman's letter. She talked about potential of $20 million to $40 million per year deficits for the town based upon increased school age children costs. And I guess my first response to that would be it's highly unlikely that the rezoning that's been proposed by the Planning Board would result in the 1,477 new units that are required to be zoned by the statute. And that is because the, the way that the Planning Board went forth in, in doing this zoning was to try to identify areas that would have more minimal impacts, that are already occupied by multifamily housing in many instances, or already have multifamily housing approved in those areas, so that the total number of units is going to be much smaller. And it, you wouldn't be able to put large-scale, high-density developments on these properties because there's not enough open area to handle the sewer. Because we are limited in, in what we can allow in new sewer connections, any development that wants to move forward under the MBTA Communities Act would very likely have to have an onsite wastewater treatment facility, and the sites that are being proposed for the zoning just don't have that available area that's open that would allow them to use that sort of facility. The second thing with regards to their, to their estimate is that the number of school age children that they're projecting is far above what would be realistic, even if you got 1,477 new units. The West Campus proposal, which is, is part of the, the new zoning proposal, but that proposal was for a 340-unit development, and they provided a fiscal impact study that projected between 35 to 49 new school age children, so far below even one per unit, never mind the two per unit that was suggested in Ms. Bowman's letter. And then also, this 20 to $40 million projection fails to take into account additional revenues that would be associated. So not only the tax revenues, but building permit revenues, things of that nature. So for the, the West Campus development, it was actually projecting a positive fiscal impact. It's impossible to make any sort of prediction without any specific proposal in front of a board, because it becomes very dependent on the number of bedrooms per unit and the projections in terms of the school age children. But the, the 20 to $40 million per year projection, I don't think is reflective of reality.
Does anybody have any questions, Paul? Go ahead, Virginia.
We were also handed some articles of other towns not, deciding not to comply either through their town meeting or other votes. But could you specifically comment on the assertions that were made about Holden? Is that, that's where the opt-out?
Holden is the community that was involved in the Worcester Superior Court decision.
Thank you.
That, that was a, a action that was brought by a local housing group and an individual. And the Superior Court in that instance determined that they didn't have standing to try to take a private enforcement action of the statute. That doesn't change the fact that the Attorney General's Office does have the authority to enforce that statute.
Okay.
And again, the, the Superior Court decision drew a very strong distinction between the lack of a remedy for these plaintiffs and the remedy that's available to the Attorney General's Office. And again, it's specifically stated, there is no opt-out provision.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with regard to some of the other communities that were noted in the, the articles that were submitted, some of them were simply that the municipalities' town meetings failed to approve a rezoning. That doesn't mean that they are choosing not to comply with the statute. It might mean that they just disagree with the locations and the, you know, the methodology for determining where these particular units were proposed to go in those communities. You know, that doesn't mean they're not going back to the drawing board to continue to try to comply.
Okay. Any other questions, Aaron, George?
So. It's still 50 acres, right? But they don't have to be contiguous.
Correct.
But they have to be, what, five acre each?
Right.
Pot?
I think there's a 25-acre minimum for one parcel, right? And then the rest can aggregate up to 50 acres.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, I mean, my feeling is, as a courtesy, if nothing else, we should vote on whether we want to put this on the ballot, and we should do it relatively soon so that people know what's going to be on the, the town election ballot. It might change the way they campaign for certain things. So I don't know how anybody else feels about that. If you're ready to vote on it this evening, if you have further questions.
Do we know if anybody else has done that, Paul? I don't know if that's a question for you. Has anybody else put a question on the ballot?
I don't know. Actually, I do think I saw a story of a town that may have put something.
But I think it was after the town meeting, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is prior to town meeting is what, what this petitioner is asking, because they still have the option to do it after town meeting via our charter. This, and that would be binding. This one that they're asking for would, would be non-binding. Virginia, any thoughts?
I.
Go ahead, George.
My, my opinion, as I said the last time we talked about it, is that I think the more information that the people have as to what, what this law really states and what they're trying to accomplish is much different than what I think some of these. to accomplish is much different than what I think some of these people who are proposing this non-binding referendum. I think they're on opposite ends of their thinking. So I think maybe give them a little time to absorb the law, or the intention, and where we're going with it, or what we're trying to do with it. And then maybe that would maybe create less tension amongst, you know, I like to see the town be nice, everybody kind of like be on the same page, which is kind of impossible, but more people being on the same page than normal, you know? So I mean, I have no problem with voting on it, but I think maybe if we just took a little bit more time and we had some more public input sessions, or maybe some of the people who could contact us, or whatever, or attend, it's mostly the planning board, right?
The planning board has had multiple sessions. I believe there's another one scheduled for this Wednesday.
If there is, then maybe if they really still want to go ahead with it, maybe they should attend that and ask the questions that, or present the questions that they have, and maybe people can deflate. I mean, I mean, they're entitled to a non-binding, I would assume they are entitled to it, but that doesn't mean.
Really not.
Right.
That's our decision, whether they have the non-binding question.
What they'd be entitled to is if they were to petition after the town meeting vote to have a binding vote, we don't, we don't have a choice with that. So we have a choice right now.
I'll go along with what you people think. It's just my opinion. I just like, I hate to see everybody in the town fighting. I think people are just on opposite ends. They just don't really, I don't think the people that are opposing this really understand it. That's my opinion, so.
Okay. Virginia?
I'm still where I was at our last meeting. I think it's premature to put this on a ballot. I think that I'm very concerned about doing it without the support of the planning board, because they have gone through a very thorough process with a lot of input from town meeting reps and public input. And I'm in agreement with George that I think that the facts really need to be laid out there for the public.
Yeah, I mean, that study was done. It was done about the twenty to thirty nine, or whatever, twenty five, you know, the students as opposed to two or three hundred, or whatever. There are only two bedroom units to begin with, and it just, you know, I mean, the numbers that have been thrown around are just rare. It's my opinion, just way out of whack, and I think maybe it's just the people getting the wrong ideas, or being led down the wrong path. So maybe give them a little bit of time to study it a little bit, and maybe, maybe then we take the vote if we still have to.
Well, my concern is we're getting close to, when's the deadline for us to put a question on the ballot, Paul? Would that be February?
It's when you sign the warrant, and that'll be your second meeting in February.
So you really need to know before then?
You need to know before then.
You need to know by early February, which is like two weeks away, right?
So we would need to know by your meeting on February twelfth, so that way we could prepare it and have it for the warrant that you're going to sign on February twenty sixth.
Aaron, I don't know if you had any thoughts?
No, I'm kind of in agreement. I'm inclined to say that I think town meeting will put out a lot of information about it, so that people can be more informed and voted on, and then they'll still have the prerogative to bring it to a binding decision afterwards, if they still feel that way.
Yeah, my feeling is, yeah, to let the planning board do their work, and they are going to bring, you know, something to the spring town meeting, my understanding is that they are. And if that fails, it'd be like, you know, like Paul Haverty just said about some of the other communities where they might have to come back again in the fall. And if it does pass, then these, the petitioners have the option to request a binding referendum after that. So I don't see really the need for this at this point. But as I said earlier, I kind of feel like we should make the decision, so if those people, those, you know, petitioners want to take some additional action, they know which way it's going. They're not in, you know, questioning, well, are they going to put it on the ballot or not? I would like to make that decision.
And then they can plan to put it on after town meeting, if they want to do that.
If they need to.
George, would you be okay with voting tonight, based on what we know? And if something materially changes between now and early February, we can always revisit it, but I don't.
No, I mean, I've obviously.
I don't see much, I think what you're getting at is you would like to see the people come together and understand, it's not necessarily going to change where your head is at right now, in terms of whether or not we should have a vote.
You know, obviously, I think pretty good legal advice, and it's just the way I understand it myself, but that's just my opinion. But, I mean, obviously, Mr. Haverty's opinion weighs a little bit more than mine. So, no, I have no problem. That is my intention. I'd like to see the town start to, start everybody wanting to fight with everybody else, maybe start taking along the same way. That's all. I'd be happy to vote whatever. If you want to vote, we'll vote.
I don't think anybody would disagree with you on that.
Right.
That we'd like to see people just talking.
But I don't know if having a ballot question is going to achieve that.
That's what town meeting is for, right? Everybody's going to get together at a town meeting and talk about it all, so, and put all the information out there, right?
Do you want a motion?
Get together.
Yeah, I think so, if everybody's ready to vote.
Do you want the motion in the negative or the affirmative? Does it matter?
I would rather, I would rather you make a motion that you would vote for.
I will make a motion to not include a non-binding question on the April town election ballot in advance of the town meeting vote regarding whether the town of Chelmsford complies with the state MBTA zoning laws.
I thought the motions were always supposed, they're not always supposed to be in the affirmative?
No, they don't have to be. I mean, there's some people, I think even Mr. Haverty prefers they be in the affirmative. I prefer.
Aaron's leaning back on her experience from the Board of Appeals. I generally recommend.
I can make a motion. I don't care, it doesn't matter either way, but.
That's fine, just making sure. I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion not to put a question on the ballot?
Aye.
Okay, four zero. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have ARPA project updates, and I guess we're beginning with General Anson talking about transportation program.
Good evening, everyone. General Anson, Community Services Coordinator. Happy New Year to you all. Nice to see you. I want to start out first by just, once again, thanking the board for awarding ARPA funds to get this brand new pilot program off the ground. I know that it was, it was, took a lot of, you know, looking at to decide whether or not this was a worthy project to fund, but hopefully, by the time I'm finished here, you'll see that it is. So appreciate, appreciate your faith in me and the work that I do here. So, so just to start off by summarizing briefly what the program is, and it's pretty much what it is now to date, is pretty much what I had presented initially, which is sort of meant to be a supplemental program to what the senior center provides for transportation, although we've expanded the populations that we serve to include all adult populations over the age of eighteen, so not restricting to only senior population. But we are running from two to six PM, Monday through Friday, when the senior center drops off, you know, stops their public transportation program, because then they provide transit to other services within the senior center. And we have been using a really wonderful transportation coordinator. Cindy Purnett has been doing a great job for us. She was first one hired in and has stayed throughout the last year, and she really did a lot of work to get this program up and running for us, even before we started giving rides. She did a lot of the background work and marketing and all of that stuff that I needed her to be able to do. So just a little acknowledgement to her, because she's done really a great job. So we're providing rides in line with the senior center pricing plan, which is three dollars round trip within Chelmsford, the town of Chelmsford, and then five dollars round trip outside of Chelmsford, within a specified area, which you can see on the map that's on the screen. And then we also do provide transportation to Leahy Clinic, Emerson Hospital, and the Bedford VA for an additional charge of fifteen dollars round trip. So just to put that into perspective, I had worked with a client who was using Uber to get to chemo treatments at Leahy Clinic at one point, and she was paying eighty dollars round trip through Uber to get to and from Leahy Clinic. So fifteen dollars is certainly a terrific deal and helps out our folks that really, you know, struggle having to pay a high cost for transportation needs. So if you flip to the next slide, you'll see just a little outline of the amount of rides we've given to date. We actually officially launched the program giving rides on May first, twenty twenty three, last year, but we happened to give a few rides sort of in beta testing before that at the end of April. So from beginning April twenty fifth up until when I put this presentation together last week, so the end of December, we had given a total of, oh, jeez, I see, the total is not even on there, but it's a hundred and something if you add the numbers up, sorry for that. But you can see that, you know, we started off a little bit slow, although May, which was our first official month where we gave twenty rides, we actually had heard from other communities that had launched similar programs to ours, that had only given anywhere from two to like seven rides in their first month. So we felt that twenty rides was actually a pretty good number for that first launch month. And you can see that we dropped off a little bit during the summer, which I think was to be expected, and then we really had a banner month in October, gave a lot of rides, and then dropped a little bit again into November and December, and I would suspect that's holidays. And already in the first week of January, we've been ramping up the rides again. So I expect that, you know, we'll pick back up. As far as expenditures go, so we had initially asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funds over two years. The board was gracious in granting seventy five thousand dollars initially for the first year, and then contingent upon satisfactory success of the program, that we would be released the other seventy five thousand dollars. You can see that actually, as to date, the total expenditures amount to only thirty seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty eight cents. So we've come in significantly under budget from what we initially had projected, and so I think that that's certainly a great thing, and I think that, you know, now that we have data from when we started giving rides in May until now, we can kind of do projections for costs for a full year basis, and I would say that, you know, for a full twelve months, we'll probably come out under fifty thousand dollars. So I'm happy that we did not require all of the money that we asked for. I'm hopeful that you will allow us to at least continue to use up the initial seventy five thousand dollars that was awarded to us while we seek additional funding for the future. So there are a couple of, I didn't include a slide for this, but I wanted to talk about a couple of major hiccups that we've had, and by major, you know, nothing earth shattering or anything, but the two biggest hiccups that we've come across is now that we're picking up and we're getting busier, and because we're only using one vehicle, and we have one vehicle allocated to give rides, we're actually starting to turn people away. So we have, most weeks now, we have a ride at least every day. There are days that we have multiple rides, sometimes two or three rides in a day, which is actually a challenge to schedule, you can imagine, in only a four hour period with one vehicle. So that means one driver who's managing those pickups if it's, you know, and drop offs if it's three rides. But it's been going well, but even despite giving, you know, even a few rides a day, we're finding that the demand is greater than what we can meet, which is actually not a bad problem to have. We'd rather have more demand than less demand, but ultimately, we'd like to be able to meet all of the demand. So at some point in the very near future, we need to look into options with obtaining a second vehicle, perhaps, and at that same time, we'll have to recruit more volunteer drivers. Right now, we have four very steady volunteer drivers, which has been perfect for the amount of rides that we're giving, but obviously, if we had another vehicle and we were giving more rides per day, we would need more volunteers. And I'm confident that we would be able to recruit more volunteer drivers. The drivers that we do have driving for us, several of them are utilizing the senior property tax benefit, so they're using their hours to apply to that, so that's a really nice incentive to recruit more drivers. The other hiccup that we've had along the way is we did a, initially, we did a sort of a comparison between a couple of different types of dispatching software programs, and we went with one that we thought looked like the best one for us, and unfortunately, it turned out not to be the best one. And the major issue that came from that is that the software actually didn't have the capability to bill in the way that we needed it to bill, although we were promised that they could develop that. So unfortunately, the company did not deliver on the promise that they had given to us, so we were unable to bill for the first few months of the program. And we, you know, I made the decision to cancel the contract with that company, and we went with a different company. You can see from the expenditures list that the initial company that we went with was quite a bit less expensive than the second company. The first company came in at three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, but again, they did not unfortunately deliver on what we needed for that package to do. And so this new company is a bit more expensive at sixty one hundred dollars, but so far, they've been doing a great job. The support has been excellent, and we've transitioned exclusively over to that software package as of November first. And so bills went out for the month of November, and we've started receiving revenue in, and bills will go out this week for the month of December. So looks like we've corrected that issue by changing software carriers. Obviously, this program's not going to be a moneymaker for us, because the rides are so inexpensive, and we would really like to keep the rides at that same cost and align with the senior center, so that we're not, you know, engaging in any sort of competition with the senior center transport programs or anything else. I am working on, for future funding, currently working on a couple of grant proposals. One is a major one for the Regional Transit Innovation Grant, and I'll be submitting that, I think it's due next week, the nineteenth, so I'll be working right up to the deadline to get that in. But, and then there are some other grant opportunities in the pipeline that we'll be submitting as well. So all that to say that, you know, we're actively searching for opportunities to continue funding this program beyond the ARPA funds that we've received from the board, and again, I'll just ask that we're able to at least use that initial seventy five thousand dollars that we were granted, which I predict will probably get us through a lot of this year until we're able to start receiving alternate forms of funding.
Through this calendar year or this fiscal, the rest of this fiscal year?
This fiscal year.
So through June, basically?
Yes, 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 because we've essentially only used about half of the initial seventy five thousand dollars.
What is the award date for the grant?
That I don't have off the top of my head. Yeah, and all of them vary, you know, the grant, the different grants, there's, I think there's three that we're applying for, and they all have varying dates of, you know, acceptance and awards and all of that, so. But I think most of them fall around the late. But I think most of them fall around the late spring.
Uh, I was speaking to a, a lady who uses the service, but I believe it must be the Senior Center service that's separate from yours.
Yes, it's separate.
Because she gets dropped off like at ten-thirty in the morning, but she can't get picked up till one. So is there a, is there a time when you, maybe you, you go half and half with, with the, uh?
We have been doing that actually, yes. Thank you for mentioning that, um, Mr. Dixon, because I did want to bring that up, that we actually are working in nice partnership with the Senior Center. And we've had, um, quite a few occasions where, um, the Senior Center has gotten an individual to their appointment because it's earlier in the day before we start operating. But then they don't need pickup until after two P M., so then our service is picking them up. So it's, it's really, you know, eliminating, um, a, a problem that existed where sometimes the Senior Center could accommodate a ride to, but not necessarily a ride home. And we've been able to pick up on that, so, yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Does the Senior Center have trouble sometime getting, uh, people, drivers?
You'd have to ask the Senior Center?
You have, you don't have any trouble at all?
No, we've been really, really fortunate with our, um, with the volunteers that we've had. And, and they're, most of them are volunteers, actually all of them, I should say, are volunteers that we've had from the beginning. We've only had one volunteer that has, um, chosen to leave the program, but the others have been with us from the beginning.
Would it be easier to combine them to just one, one service?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, um, because the services run very, very differently. Whereas we're using volunteer drivers, they use paid drivers, which obviously is going to increase the expense of the service. You know, I would not be opposed to working with the Senior Center. Debbie and I work very well together, um, you know, and if that was something that we needed to look at in the future, certainly we could look at that.
Now, you use automobiles or do you use the buses?
Yes, so we're just using, um, sedans. Right now, we're using an electric Ford Focus. So, which is nice because our drivers don't have to worry about gassing up and, and that kind of thing. We don't have to worry about reimbursing for mileage or anything like that, so, yeah.
Because a few years back, we got a couple of bu- additional buses and vans for the Senior Center. Is that what they use for?
That's what they use, and I believe those, those buses come from the L R T A. They're contracted through the L R T A. And the drivers actually have to take a special course training through the L R T A to be able to drive those because we've actually looked at, we've looked into, um, for like events that go on in town. You know, na- just as an example for the, the, um, the event with the DA Marion.
Marion Ryan.
Thank you, sorry. Marion Ryan coming up, and I, can you tell it's my first day back from vacation? So, uh, with that event coming up, you know, we, we had looked at things like that where we could maybe provide transportation to folks who want to come to an event like that and use one of the Senior Center vans. But our drivers can't do that because they're not, they, they haven't gone through the, the course and the training through the L R T A, so they can't use those vans. But we have looked at that.
Okay, and, and, uh, I've had a couple of calls from some peop- uh, somebody that's, uh, one of the members of the, the bicycle pedestrian, uh, group. And they were looking, because I, they do represent the town on the L R T A, so they were looking to go from like from the North Chelmsford to South Chelmsford, you know, which is the only way they could do that through the L R T A road is to get off at like at the Drum Hill and then get on the other bus or whatever.
Yeah, change lines.
I, I didn't know if that was, is, is they ever, have they ever contacted you or have you ever contacted anybody with? And I, I don't know how frequently they were looking for that, you know, I mean, they're supposed to get back to me, but.
We are giving, um, a couple of reoccurring rides. So we have a couple of folks who get reoccurring rides from us, you know, like every Wednesday at four, I don't know what time it is, four o'clock or something, someone gets picked up from somewhere and then delivered home because they're able to get a ride to there earlier in the day. So, um, so we do do offer that too when we can is the recurring ride. You know, the, we have to be careful with that though because we don't want to fill up the whole week with recurring rides and then not be able to take on-demand rides. So, um, so we're, you know, we're, we haven't run into problems with that as of now. But if we had a lot of requests for recurring rides, then we'd have to revisit, you know, sort of a policy on that.
Well, hopefully you're going to build that up, right?
That's the hope, yeah, that's the hope. Because, um, things have gone, you know, fairly well, um, to start. I would say more than fairly well, other than the couple of hiccups that we've had. You know, the hope is that we can expand the service and that we can continue to work collaboratively and cooperatively with the Senior Center so that, um, you know, if, if they're not able to meet the needs of some folks because they're full, that we could, you know, pick up some of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do our, do our drivers sign something like a, to release us from liability?
So, um, so Attorney Haverty could probably answer this better. I know definitely can answer this better than me, but I believe there's, they're covered under, um, the town's liability because they're volunteers.
Okay.
And then they do provide to us, um, driving records. We go back, I mean, I get a complete history, but we really concentrate on, you know, the last ten years. They also do complete query checks as well.
And if you're going outside of Chelmsford, do they, how, how far in advance do you have to book?
For any ride, it's forty-eight hours in advance. We do try to accommodate folks if they contact us in less than forty-eight hours. And oftentimes we can, um, but we do ask that folks give us forty-eight hours.
And are you finding that there's any kind of demand for extending the hours outside of two to six? Like to do morning rides or?
Definitely.
It's just the constraint right now is the car and the number of volunteers?
Yeah, so actually this vehicle, we, we have been sharing with, um, the assessors department as well. So, um, so they've had access to it, um, you know, in the day up until two P M. And then we've had it, um, after that from two to six. So, so yeah, that's been a constraint.
And with this, the new software that you're using, is the annual renewal sixty-one hundred? Or is it something less than that?
No, there was a, there was a one-time, and I'd have to look at the contract, but there was a one-time fee that we paid. And then so the annual renewal will be slightly less than that, yeah. Yeah, I, it was, I don't remember, I don't want to quote numbers because I don't remember exactly how much it was, but it was a significant enough number, you know, that it will knock a good chunk off next year's renewal.
And you said it, Jen, I mean, you obviously can't be self-sustaining with the fees people are paying for the ride. So are there, are there any other sources of funding that are in the realm of possibility besides grants to keep the program going? Because, I mean, I don't know that it's something that can be absorbed under the town budget long-term. And that was kind of the whole vision when we said, we'll jumpstart this, but we got to figure out if it, uh, if, if it proves to be of value, how do you keep it going?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, our biggest expenditure is, is the salary of the transportation coordinator. You know, and, and right now, it's a, it's a part-time, you know, nineteen-hour-a-week position, so we don't pay benefits or anything like that. If we were to expand the program, um, we would need to allocate more, you know, more money for employment. My suggestion would be to, um, hire another part-time person rather than extending hours for the person that's there now because then we wouldn't, still would not have to offer benefits, um, that type of thing. So, um, and I forget what your original question was.
I was just wondering, like, what are your, what are you thinking in terms of funding sources?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I would think for the next few years, we should be okay to be going after grant money, um, to sustain this and to fund this. Beyond that, if the program really takes off like we're hoping and it really becomes a very valuable service, then it would be something that we would be looking at, you know, looking at whether it could be incorporated into the town budget. And it, and, and in my estimation, it really would only be that transportation coordinator position. I think the rest of it, we could come up with funding. We're also, um, I didn't mention this, but, uh, another avenue that we're exploring for bringing in funding is collaborating with, um, medical offices here in Chelmsford. There are other programs in other communities that have had success in getting buy-in with medical offices where they pay like a sponsorship fee to the program because they see the benefit of the program getting their patients to their appointments on time. So they have fewer late appointments, fewer cancellations, that type of thing. So we're also looking at, at, um, approaching medical offices as well to see if they might be willing to do some sort of a buy-in with us.
And I have one other question.
Of course.
So if you look at the nine-month period, you're sixteen or seventeen rides per month on average. And if we say, I, then I said, okay, well, let's just say the first three months were startup. At six months, you're at like eighteen or nineteen rides per month on average over the last six months.
Yeah.
What, what does success look like? Like, how do we know what a good number is that this is a program worth continuing?
In my mind, success is we're able to give everyone who wants a ride, a ride when they need it. So I don't know that you can put a number on that. And as I said, you know, we're, we're already turning rides away. I mean, I, I've actually had my transportation coordinator start keeping a log of, so that we can keep track of how many rides we're giving, we're turning away. And for the month of December, we gave fifteen rides, but we turned away eight because it was double booking, we couldn't accommodate, or something of that nature, so.
And you mentioned in May how you were compared to other communities. So do you have any idea, like, what, what are some of these other communities averaging per month? Or what is their capacity?
That I don't know because we got those numbers initially as part of a, so the first software package that we used was actually, we came in at the tail end of a grant that they had had to get that software package off the ground. And so they had some grant member communities that we were meeting monthly with and we were getting status updates from them. But because we no longer use that software, we haven't been meeting with them since like August or September.
So the fif- the fifteen in December was a stretch because of concurrent requests. How did you get forty-five in October?
That's a great question. I'm not exactly sure. Yeah, I mean, the only thing I can imagine is that we had a lot of double and triple rides per day that we were able to accommodate, you know? And, and I will say that we are counting the rides, um, from point A to point B and then from point B to wherever they go next, so whether that's home. So point A to point B is a ride. And then, so if we take someone from home to a doctor's office, that's a ride. If we take someone then from the doctor's office back home, that's a second ride. That's how we're counting them, so, yeah.
And, and when, when you have a, a driver that takes somebody to an appointment like that, do they wait for that person? They do, okay.
They do, they do, yeah, um, yeah. They do, yeah. They, um, the drivers are allowed to, um, they count their hours from the moment they pick up the town vehicle to the moment they bring it back. So any wait time that they have is accumulated in those hours that if they're seeking, you know, the, the tax break from those hours, then they're able to count those. So that's the benefit to the driver for having to hang around maybe for an hour at an appointment is that that, that hour is worth something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just I, I would, I was thinking like if somebody was, you know, they knew they were going to be somewhere for two hours, they could almost do another, another client.
And this is how we've been able to schedule multiple rides in a day where if someone has an appointment that they know they're going to be there a couple of hours, then that driver can then go pick someone else up and take them to where they need to be and, you know, kind of finagle that. So that's how we've been able to do that.
Is the Senior Center program subsidized? Like, how do they do three times a ride? Is it subsidized through the state or?
Yeah, and, and through the, through the state program and then through the L R T A support as well.
Can I ask a question? So of the eighteen or nineteen average per month, I think we said, how, I think you may have mentioned this earlier, but how many of them are seniors? How many, or may fall under the service of the seniors?
The majority are seniors. Yeah, I would estimate about ninety percent.
There's a lot of overlap there.
Yeah, um, and then the remaining numbers are, um, I believe, almost exclusively disabled, non-seniors, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Very comprehensive report, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, up is the health department.
Good evening, Donna Greenwood, Health, Acting Health Director here in Chelmsford. I'm here to present the ARPA funds that you awarded the health department, which we so thank you. It allowed us to hire two staff members in the department. The first one I'm going to speak about tonight is the inspector. So the additional health inspector we were able to hire. So under that, we have, um, our permitting services. So this ARPA-funded associate also helped go through all the applications that we have. It goes from food establishments to summer camps, to tanning salons, septic systems, all the way through those on the applications. There were six hundred and thirty-four, um, in the fiscal year of twenty-three. So in the inspectional services part of it, to do the inspections under the restaurant part, we have a hundred and seventy-seven establishments slash retail environments that we inspect. Of those a hundred and seventy-seven, each get inspected at least once, but a hundred and sixty-four of those need to be under the state requirements inspected twice. So through that, that would equal up to three hundred and twenty inspections that would need to be done just in the food establishments and retail environments. I'd like to share a little bit more of those details on there. So in the first six months of fiscal year twenty-two, you'll see July through December. At that point, we did not have the ARPA-funded associate. We were able to inspect sixty-one inspections, which are annual inspections. And keep in mind, we had a hundred and seventy-seven restaurants that needed to be inspected. Total re-inspections, that's if a place that we go to, we find we need to do a follow-up because it's a violation and we need to make sure that they, um, fix that violation and moving forward are okay. There was eleven. So overall total, the first six months of fiscal year twenty-two, we had accomplished seventy-two inspections. This, again, food, retail. In the following six months, the ARPA-funded associate was hired in February twenty-two, uh, which is that fiscal year, the last six months. So in that timeframe, we were able to inspect in six months, a hundred and thirty-one inspections versus the six months previous was sixty-one, and then total re-inspection sixty-four. With an overall total is, was a hundred and nine, a hundred and ninety-five inspections. So when you take those two six months for the fiscal year of twenty-two, a hundred and ninety-two inspections were completed. Keep in mind, three hundred and twenty-eight should have been done based on needing double annual inspections per the state. But huge dramatic difference between the first six months to the second six months with that ARPA-funded associate. So moving into fiscal year twenty-three, you'll be able to see up there from the hundred and ninety-two inspections we did, we made the three hundred and twenty-eight inspections. So we made this, made the state requirement, having that ARPA-funded associate. So huge deal, and again, thank you for that. Re-inspections were fifty, so a total was three hundred and seventy-eight. So we're going to go into a few more things that the health inspectors do for us, not only to complete those inspections, but in order to complete all the other things, this ARPA-funded associate made a big difference too. So an additional two hundred and thirty-two inspections needed to be completed. There were animal inspections, pool inspections, summer camps, tanning salons, body art. And if you notice, it was a hundred and fifty hotel room inspections. That was a little bit different than previous years for us because under the C T I program for the housing program, as you know, they're being housed at the Best Western. So anytime they have somebody there that one, before they occupy, we need to do the inspection that it's meeting the housing standards. Then if that person leaves and they have another one come in to fill that particular room, we need to do another inspection to make sure they've kept up with those standards. There's a lot of re-inspections that first year, um, at Best Western to get them up to standard, to be able to meet what needed to occur there, to be able to keep people there. So the next is, um, additional services, you know, we do the lake testing. Uh, we watch for those lab reports. Plan reviews, anytime there's a new food establishment, our ARPA-funded associate also helped with this, along with our regular health inspector. We actually need to review all those plan reviews. Architect plans, making sure it's the right one. The equipment they say they're putting in meets the standards and they actually install the correct ones. Weekly inspections, while those establishments are being built out or done. And then a final walkthrough before they're able to actually open that their staff is trained, they're ready to go, and they have the right equipment to meet the, the standards. Then we had eighty-five complaints in fiscal year twenty-three, of which we were able to complete a hundred and six inspections that were needed based on those complaints. Kind of list through what each of those and how many inspections were for each complaint, but we were able to follow up and complete and have all of those adhere to the right standards. Additionally, there's two great programs that we were able to start. So the food, uh, safety class, we had started that previously, well, with the health inspector from ARPA funds and the other, um, inspector. So we actually invite the food establishments. When we were finding that we were having violations out there, we wanted to make sure that we not only educate while we were there, but to say, okay, who do you have that's either new, causing you some issues in your restaurant? but to say, okay, who do you have that's either new, causing you some issues in your restaurant or your retail environment? Come to our free class. We're going to teach you the state standards and the food inspection report to kind of go through what they needed to know, learn what were most of the errors that were happening. There's other towns that now have asked to be able to come to our classes, which we're inviting them to. So those will continue. But that first one, excuse me, thirty-two attendees and twenty-three establishments took advantage of it. It was a huge success. They really enjoyed it. And the violations certainly helped come down between our inspections and the classes. So buried and treasures workshop, you might be familiar with it. At the senior center, they already do one there during the day for, and they've been running that, I think, a couple of years. Paul could probably attest to that. Well, we've started to do it too on different times, so that we're able to get other people coming to the class. So we held our first class that has completed. There were thirteen people that came to that class. We held, we hold it at the library. We're doing another one right now. That first session, the folks that were there, all the feedback that we were getting was that it was motivating, it was life-changing. They actually asked to continue to meet after that. So they're still meeting. There's a, we have a support group that we continue to hold while we're also doing buried and treasures class too. So it's very exciting. And it's really making a difference because, I don't know if you're aware, but there's a lot of housing cases that we've been dealing with lately, and that's why we came up with this, to kind of follow through. I did just get over laryngitis, but it might be coming back a little bit tonight, so, excuse me. So actually, just to wrap up the inspector's position, without this position that you were able to fund for us, we would not have met the state requirements of two inspections per year for those establishments that needed it. It's not in here, but there's high-risk ones that we also did three times a year, and we'll continue to do that as we find them to be high-risk. Completed the additional two hundred and thirty-two inspections, as you had seen, followed up on the complaints, buried and treasures class, all the permit applications, and all the new restaurants and stuff. So in total, there was seven hundred and sixteen inspections that were completed that would not have been able to be done without the extra ARPA-funded health inspector. So we thank you for that. So now we're going to move on to the human services associate that you helped us fund. See that there? I wouldn't flip my page. All right. So in here, one of the first things that we have, some great programs that she, she started, but one of the individual things is assisting families and individuals. So she takes phone calls, helps with food insecurity, housing issues, helps get people rental assistance, homelessness, mental health, and substance use disorder. So we'll go to the next page. So some of the programs and projects and services that we've been able to come up with, obviously, is hoarding disorders. We just talked about buried and treasures. There's two people that run that class, and should be two. It was the health inspector that was ARPA-funded and the human services that was ARPA-funded. So we were able to pull them together for that. The human service associates also in the regional hoarding task force. That position created a clutter imaging tool. And what that is, it's a one through ten, it's a laminated, small like index card thing, it has pictures. This is hoarding one, two, and it keeps going through ten. So we gave those to all the first responders in town, fire and police. And they were able to kind of do some training and through our communication with them too, be able to understand when they're there, when to call the health department, so that we're able to go and they kind of go through it. There's always been great collaboration through fire and police, when to call the health department. But I, this tool, even they have told us that it really helps kind of, is it, isn't it? Should we call? That type of thing. Other towns have now adopted that same thing. We've shared it with them and they're spreading the, spreading the wealth there. So monthly soba karaoke, I know at these meetings, you've been advertising those for us, so we thank you for that. The human service associate is the one that really kind of pulled that all together for us. And our staff shares in the time that they go. Always two that will go to those events, and we have great turnout. People from Megan House that come. They've asked us to extend it to a little bit later, but we do end it at ten o'clock at night. But they do enjoy it. They're up doing karaoke and so is our staff, if you ever want to go. And I have not done it yet, but they are. So domestic violence. Our human service associate, one of the focuses was domestic violence for her. She created a program, Healthy Relationships, that we hold at the library as one of our series. It actually helps people understand kind of, one, helping them understand to talk to their adolescents about it, if there's issues with new relationships, those types of things. And it does get into actual domestic violence conversations. So we had a great turnout on that. And then to help stress and anxiety, we created meditation series. It's a six-week series that we held at CCA. It was very successful. We had at the start twenty-five people. We're going to be doing that again, but I've worked that with Deb at the senior center. So we'll be holding it there. One, there's no cost towards there, just the, the cost for the meditation. Chris Conley is the one that does it for us. So that's been great. All right, so we move on. So proudly, this person was able to get awarded Greater Little Health Alliance grant. She was a great grant writer. She was able to get us this program. What that was able to do for us is to start an adult support group, eighteen and over, that we do already hold that. This grant also allowed us to pay for a licensed social worker to be there along with our human services associate. We will be starting up soon an adolescent support group with that same social worker. And good news is this human service associate will be a licensed social worker and graduating come April. So we won't have to get a grant to pay for those funds, as long as we have her on our staff and be able to do that, but still apply for grants so that we can have the expenses kind of covered. So under this grant is also the monthly library series. You covered one of them here tonight. Let's talk about the A word. It's about anxiety, helping recognize, it's about youth, helping the parents recognize that. Changing Minds will be one of the library series under this grant. That's the stigma around mental health for the youth. It's trying to take away that stigma, so people will come forward for assistance and, and how to help people do that. The next one is going to be teaching tweens to cope with worries, stress, and anxiety. And that is for the tweens to go, and it's a session for them, but for their adults or guardians also. And it's going to help the guardians understand to recognize extreme stress, anxiety, and ideas. And at that session, there'll be practice sessions where the youth is going to be able to practice different stress management as they kind of go through. So that's a great one too. And then our last one will be supporting the well-being of the LGBTQIA+ group. So that's also going to be at the library for us. Again, this grant was great to help us, and then obviously, having the human service associate manage through all of this. We have just recently applied for Emerson Health Grant submissions, which you should hear in the next couple of weeks, so we're hoping to get that grant. That grant, we will fund requests for five thousand dollars. This human service associate is going to manage through this also. What we came up with was an idea of Creative Connections will be the name of it. It's for art therapy. What we were talking about together as a team is how do we get parents or guardians to open up communication with their teens and their adolescents more? And it's a difficult time because everyone's using their phones. That's the gap that we know exists. So through this creative therapy, we're able, if we get this grant, we'll be able to hire a social worker who focuses on art therapy as a way to help communicate between and help close those gaps. So we're excited to see what happens and hopefully in two weeks, we can announce that we got that grant. This human service associate also works with the police department. She's a liaison with us and the police department. She's on clinical outreach of over a hundred and six individuals in town. She monitors the community trends through the police reports on what the things that they've had to, mental health-wise. And that's how we're coming up with these programs that are developing, that the community needs and that we're able to accommodate for them. She's on the GL, Greater Little Health Alliance Substance Use Prevention Task Force, and also, I may have mentioned, the hoarding task force. She's also crisis intervention trained through that. All right. So without the ARPA-funded associate that you gave us the money for, again, a hundred and six residents, mental health and substance use resources, train the grant funding for the topics that I had just covered. And then she's created meaningful connections with resources around the community and outside our community in the area, so that we have the name to call, person to call when we run into an individual or a family that needs resources. She's been able to create relationships with those stakeholders. So with that, I want to thank you for the two ARPA-funded associates. It's been a great thing that we've been able to reach out to the community.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, I mean, I think this is terrific. I just, I'm still left with, when we created the, the ARPA funds for this, it was like a temporary, I think, two-year thing coming out of COVID. So are there grant funds or anything available to continue with some of this once the ARPA funds are expended?
Not to, not to staff the associates. We would not be able to get a grant to, to do that.
Those were like a?
Yeah, I have enough, there is enough money. Kind of went over it with Darlene and Paul the other day.
Oh, okay.
We have enough money to keep, for another year, as we go through that. And Paul and I had a conversation today.
What happens when the year is over?
Yeah, I mean, it's very, it's very clear that the health inspection thing is, is, it's sort of not discretionary.
Right.
And I think that's something we, as we, as Donna mentioned, that's something we've got to look at somehow, providing on an ongoing basis, because you're dealing with public health in terms of dining establishments, you know, and so forth, and.
Is the three hundred and twenty-eight requirement from the state new, or were we just not, we just weren't?
We just were not able to meet that standard.
And, and, you know, the, the other thing that's exploding, and you're hearing it from Jen, you, you'll hear it from, from Chief Spence, you're hearing it from the schools, the whole issue of the health services and mental health and other issues, it's, it's just, it's just exploding. And, and that's going to be a challenge going forward. You know, ju- just because there's such an extraordinary demand out there. That, that's what we'll be looking for in terms of grant funding, other funding in the future. The, the need is just so strong out there right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Donna?
Okay. Great job.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for funding.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Chief Ryan to tell us about how the fire department used their ARPA funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members, Mr. Manager and Town Council. Actually, this is good timing, because this time last year, January is firefighter cancer awareness month. So this time last year, the firefighters of the Chums Fire Department, staff members went through, underwent cancer awareness screening. We used a company called United Diagnostic Services, members of the union. Dr. Christine Cantler, who we've used for skin cancer screening, recommended this firm, very good. We actually set up the exam room, as you can see, in our training room. They use ultrasound technology to examine our heart, cardiac, carotid arteries, kidney, liver, spleen, bladder. And the members were provided with the exam results. They did not go to me. They went directly to them with recommendations for follow-ups. And UDS has a good reputation. They do this throughout the country. They've done over six thousand eight hundred as of today with what they call four thousand actionable, basically, follow-up recommendations for that. So my thanks to this board, because that was over seventeen thousand dollars to make this happen. And this line item has been closed out. But fortunately, the fire chiefs and the firefighters unions throughout the state have been pushing to kind of expand this program, these type of programs. So the fire marshal, the new fire marshal, John Devane, has sent out a notice, and I got it today, you know, allowing firefighters for no cost to get skin cancer screening, chest CAT scans. I underwent one in Worcester last year. PSA blood tests, which will usually pick up different types of cancer. And if you have to pay out of your pocket, that's about a hundred to three hundred dollars. Mammograms and ultrasounds. So again, I think the state is really starting to fill some of the gaps. So we're in a better position than I think we were last year. And the next slide, there it is. That's the new Pierce Rescue that was delivered last March from Bradenton, Florida. That's where the Pierce manufacturing plant is. It was delivered in March, but we did not put that into operation until July. This is really an asset to the Chums Fire Department, because it has, it'll allow us to accommodate more seating. The old rescue would only fit two members. This will accommodate up to five. Also, as you can see, this will allow us to carry more equipment. Sometimes during this time of year, we have cold weather equipment that we cannot carry certain equipment, because we just didn't have the room. This allows us to carry that equipment. And this was over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so my thanks. There's about ten thousand dollars left. It has been spent. We're just waiting for the invoices and the equipment to come in. So I anticipate the equipment probably arriving probably late February, early March, and that will probably close out this line item. So certainly my thank you to this board, to the town, for really giving us, you know, these, the ability to fund these two things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you transport, can you transport any people in?
We do have a class five. In the strict event of a critical emergency, like a mass casualty, we could if we had to. But generally, we're non-transporting.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. And last up is Police Chief. Tell us about how the police department used their funds.
Good evening, Select Board Members. Town Manager Cohen, Attorney Havity. Thank you for having me before you again tonight. I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on two programs that the Chums Police Department funded under ARPA for the American Rescue Plan Act. I know you have PowerPoint slides in front of you. I'm going to pretty much just do a quick summary of what it was and then what the results were. Give you limited results. Sigma Tactical Wellness, it's a nationally recognized program for developing and integrating complete programs for the wellness initiatives within law enforcement. The reason this program is so important is the police department and a police officer, the average life expectancy is twenty-two years less than that of the average citizen. In addition, the average age of a heart attack is forty-nine in law enforcement, as opposed to sixty-five years old in the civilian population. Obviously, this is a very difficult problem for us that we're trying to address. We're trying to become proactive. We've instituted certain things at the police department to try to address these situations. Approximately fifty-nine of our officers out of seventy participated, so over eighty percent. There were four parts to the program. Something called the Sigma Cardiac Triad, which I'm going to talk about in a second. Metabolic analysis, exercise and nutritional modification, and a medical evaluation. Now, the cardiac triad consisted of basically an ultrasound of the carotid arteries, which tested the thickness of the carotid artery. Then offices took what's called an advanced lipid panel blood test, which assesses the patient's likelihood for coronary disease and predicts the risk of a heart attack. And then also a stress test. Under the stress test, the offices will put, the offices or employees, we did open it to our dispatches, highly stressful jobs, and several other employees at the police department, where the patients would basically get on a stationary bicycle and also wears a mask. And it measures the patient's capacity, functional capacity, and identifies any lack of blood flow to the heart. Now, during the metabolic testing, they assessed the nutritional level of each patient and also made suggestions regarding the patient's overall diet, which I'm going to get into in a second. The next part was exercise and nutritional modifications were also suggested to each patient to decrease body mass index, fatigue, and other cardiovascular risks. Each patient then met with a medical professional to go over the blood labs and understand the results of the carotid thickness test, which was with the ultrasound, and also the stress test. The patient was also given steps towards improvement in risk areas. Now, as far as the results of the program, when Lieutenant Gary Hannigan brought this program to the chief and I several years ago, he had basically saw it at a training he had gone to for a certification he was looking to achieve. And during the training, it really wasn't around this area. And as soon as we got it in. And as soon as we got it in Chelmsford, we started to see a lot of other communities, NADIC, several other communities started to come on board. Tewksbury actually came to us and participated in ours, not at our cost. They paid, Tewksbury paid for it. Many of the employees were provided with suggestions for vitamin supplements and other medications to improve their overall health and wellness. Each employee was also given recommendations to improve their dietary intake. And each employee was provided with an in-depth report on the individual results to share with their own doctor. And I can say from personal experience, I actually gave mine and became part of my medical record at my doctor's office. It was very helpful. I'd never had a stress test before. It was very helpful, and it was all under this program. Several employees, and obviously I'm not going to get into who the employees were, were referred to their personal doctors for other significant follow-ups. After the program, employees have been talking more openly, almost in a competition with each other as far as how we can change things. As most of you probably know, we have two gyms at the police station, and they're utilized very frequently by the officers. And it's, it really, we, we needed this, and I appreciate wholeheartedly that you supported this program. After the program, one of the things that the opinion of the department personnel that was, that was excellent and useful and that we should be doing this more, as opposed maybe every five years, allocating a certain amount every five years, maybe we seek out grants every so many years. You don't want to do it, you don't have to do it every year, but it is very important because now we have a baseline for the officers that are there. And as you know, we have a lot of younger officers that are working for the police department. 100% of the $35,000 of the ARPA funds were expended on the program. Now, the second update on the frontline initiative, and I know you have it in your slides, in that initiative, $81,000 of the ARPA funds were allocated to fund a clinician position. Approximately $19,589 has been spent to date. And this was due to a change with the frontline initiative program. On July 1st of 2023, we basically switched from frontline to a Behavioral Health Unit Police Collaborative, which consists of Drakeit, Tewksbury, Bilrika, Drakeit, and Tingsborough. And under that, it's the same collaborative under frontline. However, they got rid of, for lack of a better term, they reorganized so they no longer have an extra level of supervision at the top. They have somebody that's an actually working clinician that is supervising now. And as a result of that, this money was not needed because now Department of Mental Health now pays for our clinician in full under a grant. So we no longer need those funds. Now, as far as the Behavioral Health Unit Police Collaborative, it's extremely important to the police department. In calendar year 2023, our clinician assigned to the program was involved in approximately 432 of the police department's calls for service. On behalf of the police department, I would like to thank all of you for your support of both of these programs. They're extremely important to us, and I appreciate the support. And I'm here to take any questions you may have.
Anybody have questions for the chief?
That's great. I appreciate the update.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to turn back about $60,000 from that one?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
That's great.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the MMA resolutions that were mentioned earlier during public input. So I guess I have a different take on using, on having MMA be a so-called lobbyist for the cities and towns in the, in the state with the legislature. I think that gives us an additional tool to advocate for things that, that are meaningful, basically across.
Could I just, before you, what's the purpose of this agenda item? I don't even know what the purpose of it is.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, let me explain.
Okay, well. I know there was an assumption made in public input, but I have no idea why this is on the agenda.
Okay. The end of next week, the 19th and 20th, the Mass Municipal Association holds their annual conference. And during that conference, they have policy subcommittees that bring forward proposed resolutions to, for them to focus on basically in the year going forward, the MMA overall. So these are the two proposed resolutions that they're bringing forward this year, one of which is the usual one. It's the partnership between cities and towns and the Commonwealth. But it's, it's just, and the reason that we vote on them is just to reinforce the partnership, I guess you could say, that is there between the MMA and the cities and towns. They have, you know, many staff people that are in constant contact with the relevant legislators who work on different areas. So, and Paul, you probably, you know more about it than I do, and maybe you could explain it better.
Yeah. What's Pat describing is, is every January, they have their, their annual meeting. And part, part of the annual meeting is a session where there's a convening of the cities and town representatives. And, and how it works under the association is the chief executive officer or the chair of the select board, in our case, is the voting delegate for the community. And therefore, I think the voting delegate, in this case, Pat, wants to make sure that if she casts her vote, and I think in the 30-some-odd years I've been there, most, most of the votes are unanimous. But the point is, it's really to, it's really to send the message to the governor and the legislature, basically saying, these are the priorities for cities and towns as you're embarking on a new budgetary session, and in this case, end of a legislative session.
Don't we usually, not to detract from this, but in years past, we've voted on who our delegating members going, or voting member's going to be?
That's because if the chair doesn't go, then the chair, then you have to vote for the replacement, right?
So this is, so voting tonight is giving, isn't going directly to the MMA. It's giving Pat guidance that we would support a vote one way or the other when she, because we're going to be voting through Pat no matter what.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Right, okay. So I'm sorry, now go ahead and explain your.
So anyway, they, they are quite lengthy, as you can see, so I'm not going to, going to read them. But, you know, like the first one, as I said, it's, it's pretty much an annual one. It talks about, you know, working on a tightly capped property tax to, to try to get more funds from the legislature so we don't have to rely on that so much, as we've heard about from, from Paul on our upcoming budgets. It talks about school aid, talks about, you know, general government. The emergency shelter crisis, I mean, that's a, that's a big one. It, it covers pretty much everything that we've heard about when we talk to our legislative delegation and more. And in most cases, at least a, an indication on how they would approach the legislature to, to help the communities deal with it, so that, deal with these issues so that everything doesn't have to come from local property taxes, that the state provides their share, their fair share.
And how do they, how'd they develop this? Is that with input from the participating, I mean, Chelmsford's a member of the MMA?
Right. We're one of 350 members of, because I think there's one community that's not a member, but of the Mass Municipal Association, and then they have subcommittees, and they have an executive board. And then annually, they draft the policy. And in this case, as Pat, as the chair described, this is almost an annual standing financial request. So they'll review it, update it, and then send it out for distribution and then for consideration at the annual meeting.
And then each municipality votes whether they are in support of it?
Yeah.
And it's just sent to the state as a?
Did this come out of the executive board, Paul?
This came out of the MMA Executive Board, and I think it was published in The Beacon, and then, and then it's here at the C. You know, none of this, none of this, what's in this policy is, as, as the chair noted, it differs significantly from what's in prior years. The idea is fair, you know, fair revenue sharing. The principle being that cities and towns are in partnership with the Commonwealth, and, and therefore, they, they hope to strengthen that partnership and basically receive a share, share of, of state resources because in Massachusetts, cities and towns are, are entities created by the legislature and also limited by the legislature. So, so for example, the state has taxing resources that the towns don't have, such as income tax, capital gains tax, and so forth, that aren't, that cities and towns are not allowed to impose in Massachusetts under state law. So therefore, the idea is to, you know, constantly remind the governor and the delegate, and the legislature that, you know, this is a partnership, and particularly as we're going into a very challenging fiscal period right now, to make sure that cities and towns are, are, are treated fairly as, amongst the state's priorities.
I mean, everything that's in here seemed to be in alignment with what we've been talking to our, our legislators about as well.
I mean, some of it's fairly specific, though. Chapters, the chapter 70.
Yep. So for example, yeah, they want full, full funding and, and under the, and the budget for chapter 70.
A minimum increase of $100 per student. I mean, that's pretty.
That's, that's an increase. Right, that's, that's a specific.
Some of this is fluffy, but some of it is very.
Some of it is very specific. And in previous years, the legislature's gone down to $30 per student, and I think this past year, they did $50 per student. And they, they also advocate for additional chapter 90 monies and so forth. So again, part of it is a, a request that they know won't get fully fulfilled, but it's basically putting the message out there that you can't say we didn't ask.
Right. And it's, like I said, it's, it's another avenue that we can take to put some pressure on the legislature and the governor for the needs that we see.
Right.
So any other questions about, we can, we can talk about both of them. And then the second resolution mainly focuses on, on climate change, which I think we've had one, one like this before. I don't, I don't remember exactly, but it's, it is, you know, it talks about the MVP program and, and other programs that the state would help the municipalities with. Any questions, thoughts?
No, I, I think it makes sense. I, I mean, the, the way, the way we resolve the issues with our not getting what we feel is what we should get from the state is you have to do some amount of lobbying, and our mechanism for doing that is through our MMA membership. And if we do nothing, we'll get nothing.
Well, so.
I mean, it's just, that's how things are funded. So you have to be in there advocating for what you want. And like I said, I, when I read through this, it all seems to be very much in alignment with everything we've been talking to our House Representatives and our senator with.
We're talking to them directly.
Yeah.
Right. And this is just another avenue.
So this helps, I mean, it would help them help us.
Right. It adds to their voice, yeah.
What it does.
You get a big-time speaker every year, sometimes the governor or?
Yeah, the governor will be there, and Lieutenant Governor, and, you know, imagine Mayor Boss will swing through and, you know.
So is there a sense to endorse or?
Yeah, I'm just.
More discussion?
Are they, are you guys, are you all set down at that end?
I don't, I don't know. I'm kind of inclined to disagree, actually. It is a lobbying.
Well.
But I don't know if our, our, does support that. I don't know. I kind of feel like there's some.
Well, it doesn't not support it.
I don't know.
Are you prepared to vote tonight, or do you want it on the next agenda?
The next agenda will be too late.
Oh, it will because it's the 19th and 20th?
What I can say, Erin, is most states across the country have.
Yeah.
I mean, it's supposed to be.
Municipal leagues, which is what this basically is of Massachusetts. The Mass Municipal Association is the, it's the municipal league. And so whether you're in New Hampshire or other states, they have this initiative, basically being it's the grassroots efforts of the local communities to influence what takes place at the legislature. And, and then, and then similarly, your.
I just feel like some of this is very, some of these bullet points are very specific. I'm not sure if they're things that we actually.
Well, do you want to go in and pick out?
No, I don't. Exactly. I mean, that's, that's what I was just going.
I think the flip side of it is without the specificity, you lose your leverage to get something into the legislation.
And, and your colleagues on the street at the school, at school committee, you know, they have the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, who work with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and they do similar things. They, they, they have a legislative agenda, and then that gets advanced and to the state.
Yeah, no, I understand all of that. I just don't know that actually all of this would be in our best interest.
It doesn't stop you.
Specifically, Chelmsford's best interest, as opposed to the towns in general.
It doesn't stop you from lobbying on your own either.
Exactly.
Yes, no, it doesn't.
And if there's something that you don't agree with, I mean, I, you know, I think in, in general, they're trying to.
Strengthen numbers, obviously.
Well, it's not my job to spend the state's money, but to, you know, tell them how to spend it.
No, but these resolutions can be amended on the floor at, at the annual meeting, and I've, I think I've seen it done twice unsuccessfully, where a community found something that was really objectionable, and, and they came in and said, you know, made the case. It's all open forum, and, you know, you do have time to get up there and present to the, to the body. So it's, it's, it's not like all or nothing, but, you know, we, we would really need a specific action to say.
I mean, as a private payer of taxes to the state, as somebody who watches what they spend their money on, if I don't agree with all of this, you know what I mean? I don't know that this is, I don't know, that's tough for us to kind of, throw out there for the whole town, but.
Is there any more discussion?
No, I don't think so.
So I will make a motion to support Chair Wodges's endorsement of the proposed resolutions supporting a fiscal, enduring fiscal partnership between cities and towns and the Commonwealth in fiscal 2025 and beyond, and the proposed resolution supporting a local, state, federal partnership to address climate change, enhance resilience, and bolster adaptation initiatives at the January 19th and 20th conference.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next up is our discussion that was requested regarding whether to release the hold that we placed last year on our eighth all alcohol license. Is that the eighth one, Paul?
Yeah. And your vote a year ago, almost a year ago, was for that moratorium to run through December 31st, 2023.
Right.
So this has been continued eight times?
No, 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 no.
No, we have an eighth license.
We, we have eight licenses. We only had seven until, until the 2020.
Census.
When the census. And then we get another one because, because of the population. That's how it's determined. So we decided the first time, I think it's been a couple of times we've done this, right? We've, we decided not to issue that eighth license, and now we have to decide if we, if we want to continue the moratorium or if we want to open that up. And quite frankly, if we open it up, it opens up to everybody. It's not who spoke today.
Agreed.
So, and there have been requests, right, recently, Paul?
Yeah, we've got a few requests, yeah.
If we might.
So if we do open it up today, is there a waiting list? Does it go to a certain?
No, we don't keep a waiting list. It would be, somebody would have to submit an application.
It's a first-come, firsts.
It is first-come, firsts.
And it's, and it's also up to us.
Oh, and we, we have to approve it? Yeah, we have to decide. We can, if there's multiple applications.
You can deny a request based on proximity of our license holders and so.
Will we receive multiple applications, or will we just receive the first one that comes in front of us?
I will only present to you what I receive.
Can I ask a question regarding?
Well, let me, sorry, George, can I just, to Erin's question, it's not that we would say, submit your applications by a certain date, and then we'll review whatever submitted as they come in. He'll, he'll present them to us.
Will you only present us with one, the first one that comes in?
Well, it depends on what you decide. If you say, we're going to release the license, and to be fair to all parties, we're not going to. and, and to be fair to all parties, we're not going to consider any license applications prior to March first, let's say, as a random number. Then I would basically, well, this is what we received on March first.
Yeah.
It's, it's whatever you would decide if you wish to entertain, you know, uh, applications for the additional license.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, George.
No, I was just curious. Regarding the, the one that was discussed this evening, hypothetically, it was, that chef license is no longer associated with that particular.
Well, you approved the transfer to Princeton Street.
So, there's no conflict or anything like that, even though they haven't gone through with it yet.
Right.
And how long has that one, how long ago was that one transferred?
Over a year. It's over a year ago.
They haven't done.
Well, they're the ones that are building.
That was why we had them come in a couple of meetings ago and said, what's going on? And to date, they still have not submitted building permit application.
Okay, okay.
So, um, any thoughts on whether we want to open this up, or delay it for another?
I'm inclined to, to, to say yes.
To say yes to what?
To, to opening up the, the additional license, I think. I'm curious what the rest of you have to, have to say.
George, any thoughts?
Not really. I, I, I'm probably more apt not to than to do it, but, um.
Not to?
I'd go along with the majority wants to do, whatever. If we get, get a feel for it, I, you know, I, I don't really have a feel for the business right now, you know? I mean, it seems like we've had one down, and it doesn't seem like anybody's already. I mean, we've had one out of the seven that wasn't, hasn't been in play for over a year, and it doesn't seem like anybody's suffering, so, I mean, if you're going, why, why go from six to eight? That's what's going to happen.
But we've had applications, so we've had interests.
Well, definitely have.
People interested, I guess.
You always.
We always have interest, yeah.
We had. But.
Virginia?
So, I mean, we, we had seven before, and right now, we're at six only because, well, we're, seven are obligated, but only six are active because of the pocket license that's happening. So I, I think, for me, the question is, do we go from the seven to the eight? And I'm still kind of in the same place where I was last year, is I, I, I don't see much downside in opening up the eighth license. There's some, there's some, I mean, the census data basically said we can support an eighth license in our town, and I appreciate some of the things that were brought up last year, where we didn't want to create competition with existing liquor stores. But like that said, if there's an area of town that's underserved, they're going to go somewhere else anyway. And I just, I, I honestly, I don't see much downside. I don't think by opening up an eighth liquor license, you're going to be taking business away from, just, just as an example, if you open up an eighth license in North Chelmsford, you're not taking business away from the liquor store that's in Chelmsford Center, because nobody from North Chelmsford shops there anywhere. They're going to New Hampshire, because there is nothing close. So. I, we don't, we don't restrict the vigilar licenses. I just, I don't, I, I appreciate the concern that was brought up at the beginning of this, but it's been two years, and I don't think that there's really much downside to just opening up the eighth license and supporting business. I don't, I think it supports business more than it would hurt business. That's, that's my feeling, and I think it could bring in extra revenue for the town.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of agree more with, with Virginia this year. I have, I have supported having the moratorium, but especially given that, um, that the poor folks in North Chelmsford haven't had a liquor store for so long.
There's no drinkers in North Chelms.
Oh, okay, is that it? I, I would be okay with opening up, and I would want to do it on, you know, something like what, what Paul said, have, you know, open it up to, you know, March or March fifteenth or whatever, and see how many applications we get, and then review them maybe all in one session.
And I, and I'm okay with the idea of if somebody wants to open up one that's right next door to one that already exists. I think, I like the idea that we have the prerogative to say no, because that would be, that would create an unnecessary competition.
Right, I mean, yeah, I, I would, right, that would be one of my, my criteria, yeah, where it's going to be located and, and how, how well-served that area already is, so. I mean, we have, we can come up, each person can come up with their own list of criteria, what they, what they want it to be.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a geographical preference, but.
Do we need to vote on this?
I think we do, and I think if, if we're going to have a, a set timeline, we should decide what that's going to be.
Okay, so where, where do people want to go with this timeline discussion before I move to motion?
I would say at least March first, give them, you know, six weeks or whatever to get.
So that would be the, the deadline to submit applications? Would that be how that is?
The board wouldn't consider the applications till March first.
Well, we would, I don't think we would consider them as they came in. I would.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, they would, in other words, I would, we would.
Yeah.
Whatever arrived on March first, we would present to the board at, at your next meeting in March, uh, you know, which I think.
March twelfth.
March twelfth, so then that way.
Eleventh, I think, yeah.
And then that way.
Can we make it longer than that?
We can.
I kind of prefer to see, because I know that there's people that are existing, that are interested, right? But maybe, I don't know.
You'd rather wait till April or May, or?
The, I guess the only downside of pushing it out is you're also pushing out interested businesses knowing one way or the other.
Probably, all you're voting for is that it's going to be available. You're going to start taking applications. Doesn't mean you have to get it out of there.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we could, um, we could maybe set a date at, at a future date.
Our first meeting in March is the eleventh.
Eleventh, right.
So even if you said March first, that's.
It wouldn't be enough time to do the advertising for the hearing and everything else before, before the board turned over.
So if you said March, if you said March first, then the here, then we would probably be looking at March twenty-fifth.
Right. But the, but the problem is if your policy is not vote the night of the hearing, you would then, you would then spill over into the election, which is April second.
And we'd have to be board members, but can't they just vote?
Well, no, but.
Well, not if they weren't there for the hearing.
Right.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe we should make it April first, either that or we'd have to move it sooner, yeah.
Can you say that again?
What, the, the, the constraint you're running into was your April second election. So if you hold, if you hold a license hearing, the people who are sitting on the license hearing.
Oh, if it continues.
And the board, the board has a policy that you don't vote the night of the, of the hearing.
So we either have.
Continue it, you could, you could continue it through, spilling it to the.
We either have to back it up to early February, or push it out to the beginning of April.
I, I think early February would be too.
Probably too fast.
That's true. I'd rather push it.
So if we were to set the deadline, or, or to say that we won't, we will consider them as of April first?
Right, then I would bring them to you in the first meeting of April, and then you'd schedule the hearing, and then you'd probably be acted upon in May.
So each one that we would hear would have to, have to issue, would have to notify their butters and everything like that, correct?
Exactly.
So, so the first meeting in April, we're deciding which ones we want to have a hearing for?
No.
Or, or you have to have a hearing for all of them?
You have a hearing for all of them.
Okay, so the hearing would be April twenty-second, basically?
What?
If you, if you set the deadline as April first.
Questioning the date. Our first meeting in April is the twenty-second?
No, 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 your first meet, your first real meeting in April would be the eighth.
Is the eighth, but you can't, if they, if they're not submitted till the first, he needs two weeks to advertise the hearing. So that brings the actual hearing to April twenty-second.
Right.
Okay.
Unless you want to back it up to say, like, March, March twenty-ninth, or something.
I mean, the only, you know, we have a town meeting in, in the, in the middle then, which could delay it more than two weeks, the decision possibly.
Should we delay it till May? Is that too long now?
I think that's too long.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Get it moving.
Okay, let's do April first.
You okay with that, George?
I'm okay, because, yeah.
And this is just for the all-alcoholic, right? Not for the wine and malt?
We already have eight, six, seven of those that aren't issued, so.
The motion is just for the all-alcoholic, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we lift the moratorium on the eighth all-alcoholic beverage license, and that the board will consider license applications for the eighth license that are received by April first.
Second to motion.
Sounds good. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four, zero, very good, thank you. All right. Next is, um, my second try at the.
I, I, I'm sorry, I still, that agenda item said wine and malt, which was a separate decision that we made in the same set of minutes, so is there, is there a second discussion we're having here?
I don't think we need to, do.
If you go back to the vote there, the vote on the malt licenses was, um.
We didn't vote, we just decided that we were going to keep its current policy, so.
Right, exactly, so there's really no, yeah.
Oh, there's no action to take.
Unless the board wished, unless the board wished to take any.
That's, that's a, a policy decision right now, right?
Correct.
All right.
All right. Okay, so, um, so I did a little bit of more work on the policy for monuments and memorials and recognitions, kind of based a lot on what, what you suggested, George. Maybe, um, appointing a committee that would be in charge of looking at applications, I guess you could say, um, for what people might want to do for recognitions. And I.
Oh, yeah, with draft, like, draft guidelines as to, you know, what qualifies, what qualifies somebody for you. You know what I mean? Just because somebody happens to be on a committee and like somebody, and they, you know what I mean? They catch them in a, they get somebody else, what do they nominate them, somebody's just going, all of a sudden, you got the Joe Brown, uh, whatever, you know what I mean? Yeah, I think, yeah, you need a, a committee to set guidelines as to what, what constitutes somebody who deserves that type of recognition.
Okay. Now, would you, would you, I mean, and, and I think, Virginia, you might have suggested that we also have a form for people that want, that have an idea about what they want to do, like, you know, some of the ones that have been brought forward. You know, it's, it's kind of two different things, the, the recognition and the, and the, you know, monuments and memorials type thing, but they, in my mind, they're, they're kind of, you know, the same general idea.
Same thing, I mean.
Right.
If you're going to give somebody a monument, you might as well give them a rec, I mean, a recognition or whatever.
Some kind of plaque or something to, to, you know, for, to say why we're doing that. So, is that what we want to do? Do we want to set up another, a committee? Like, you know, we did have the civic committee, but, um, they actually, they had a, a, pretty much a wider, um, charge. This is more limited. I don't know, I hope everybody had a chance to read it and have any, any other thoughts about how to move forward with it.
So they would review and then bring it to us?
Correct.
With the recommendation?
Right.
Oh, oh, and, and other approvals from department boards or committees as needed?
Right, sometimes like DPW, you know, they might want to send it through them, or if it's in the historic district.
Or to school, or, yeah.
Well, school, I think school department, school committee has their own, has their own authority. And I think, I think that's a clarification that we need, too, which, which boards and committees do have ownership of.
They have care, custody, and control of their, of the schools' buildings and, and grounds, so therefore, they can, they, for example, when they dedicated the tree to Carol Cleveland, they didn't come to the select board, and they, they didn't come to the town meeting, and, and I think it's very similarly, the library trustees, they, they're doing a dedication for Becky Herman, that they didn't come to the select board for approval, and nor, nor do they need to.
The last one, they did one before, about four, five years ago.
Right, but they didn't come to the select board for approval, that's what I'm saying. They have care, custody, and control of their.
They do.
Of their facilities.
Okay.
Basically, any elected board, cemetery commission, if they were doing something, they would come to the select board either.
Okay, all right.
I have a couple of questions about the words.
Sure.
Could I start with that?
Yeah.
So, on the, the third paragraph of the draft policy on the first page, it says, "The, the monuments and memorial committee shall use this form when evaluating proposed recognitions." Did you mean they shall use this policy, including those submitted via the request recognition form?
I, I guess I intended to, to refer to the form that we had.
But you do, you do at the end of the sentence.
Oh, okay, you're right. I guess I did mean the policy, yeah, okay, put it in the wrong.
Because that would make more sense to me.
Yeah, okay.
And then on the, the page that says, "Charge for the monuments and memorials committee", where it says, "Any resident of Chelmsford who was killed in action will receive appropriate recognition in accordance of the wishes of their family." I'm just, I agree with the, I agree with the principle, I'm just trying to understand, what does that look like? I mean, does it need to be more specific? Could somebody say, "I think the appropriate recognition is to put, you know, a plaque on the front of Town Hall," right? And I mean, I don't think that's what you mean by this, so what is that, what does that mean?
Well, I guess that would be for up, for this committee to come up with more defined specifications on, on what that might be. I mean, the last time we had something like that was the Andrew Zabrick, you know, uh, when he passed away, and the Memorial Bridge over four ninety-five on North Road was named for him. I don't know what the process was. I mean, I think that he might have even had to go to see.
All I'm saying is it says, "In accordance with the wishes of his or her," it should probably say slash their family.
Right, yeah.
So I think there's two things you're trying to balance there. One is that the committee determine, helps determine what an appropriate recommendation is. Like, there's got to be a filter, right? And that you do it in concert with what the family wants.
Yeah, I, I guess I wanted to, I wanted to say that if somebody dies in action, we expedite it. That was my goal, to expedite it, that they're not going to be turned down if they want some recognition for their loved one. And maybe it's not worded the right way to say that.
So may, maybe then, Pat, it's, it's something just as simple as, um, you know, a family wishing recognition for their family member who's a resident of Chelmsford, killed in action while serving in the US military, something, a statement that just says that we'll process that request as soon as possible within one year.
Yeah, okay, right.
It's the first sentence I'm, I just.
So you want to take out the last phrase, the "in accordance with"?
No, I, I just don't underst, so, I think we'll receive appropriate recognition is kind of, it's up for debate, too. Like, what does that mean?
Right, I mean, different families might think different recognition is appropriate.
So what you're trying to say is that the memorials, the monuments and memorials committee will process any request for a Chelmsford resident killed in action while serving in the US military within one year of the death? But then that assumes that they're submitting the request promptly.
Yeah, that's too specific.
Okay, okay, I mean, this is just a draft for the committee to get started.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, is, but, but this is a draft for us to talk about, right?
Okay, I think you, but.
I think, I think that parag.
With some sense of urgency, or something.
I think that paragraph just needs clarification, because.
Well, maybe it shouldn't even be in there. Maybe the, this committee should come up with.
You just make it a general.
I mean.
They should come up with their own.
Any type of recognition, and obviously, that would take some type of.
Because, because, I mean, a family might not come forward within a year, right? Grief takes a while to process sometimes, so.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, it, I can take it out, and, you know, when, when this committee gets formed and, and sits down, they can come up with.
They can figure it out, yeah.
Yeah, what, what the criteria are going to be, and that can be part of, part of that.
Yeah, their own kind of format for how they.
And my only other thought, Pat, was I like the form that you, you put together. I didn't know if somewhere on the form, you just might, there might want to be even just a footer that references whatever the policy is at the end, so that whoever's filling it out understands there is a policy that they can download or look at.
Okay.
Who, who deals with, like, memorials and monuments now, I guess, besides, like, DPW?
Well, we, we have.
No, the select board would.
On occasion, yeah.
Select board, no, it's when they dedicate squares and so forth, that, that all have come before the select board. Now, the problem is, that hasn't happened in recent times, and that's why.
The DPW is.
DPW is responsible for maintaining. DPW is responsible for maintaining and, and, you know, maintaining them, but the, but the, DPW didn't have the ability to dedicate or, or to name anything. That's, that, that comes from the select board.
I was just thinking if there was an already existing committee that might.
No, I can.
Be good to kind of be tasked with this, but I guess they're really.
No, there, there, there isn't, and, you know, I've looked at surrounding communities, there is only one other community that, you know, I kind of took a lot of theirs for the um, you know, what committee does. Most, most places, some of them have a form, but then the form, it just goes directly to some administrator that either approves it or not, which doesn't sound right. I mean, it should come before the, the select board who does have control over the.
Yeah.
The actual locations where the, like, you know, the recognition could be.
And you think we can staff, we can staff a committee?
I don't know, George seemed to think we could.
We could what?
Staff a committee?
Yeah, I would, but I'd like to have a diverse committee instead of, you know.
The same.
Everybody coming from the same.
My only concern is if you have a committee that they didn't feel compelled that they have to do something.
They don't have any expectations.
No, because that's the thing, I mean, we've, we've, you know.
All you have to do is establish a process if, if we want to go ahead with that.
If the committee doesn't meet, then.
Well, I mean, they, they don't have to meet on any regular basis, just as needed, I mean, and we have other committees like that.
But remember, we used to have a side advisory board and then we kept, we, we were sort of almost, it was almost the quip that it was, oh, they, they never met, and then they, you know, and they weren't, what were they doing? That kind of, that's the only thing that came to mind was if you have a committee that's, basically that they're, they're not active unless there's something before them. Right? And, and.
And we don't need them to be aggressive, but, you know, we don't need them to go advertise monument, you know, dedications or anything.
I mean, you know, we, we've had, in, in the past year, we've had two people come to us to, to put things at different parks and that's what, you know, we only have so much real estate, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And, and I think they need to be um, you know, considered more carefully about where they are and what they, what they, what they honor and um.
Yeah, you don't want to just haphazardly.
Exactly, and that's, and that's the way it seems to be, I mean, and maybe there need to be some standards too, yeah, because.
Paul, your, your comment was if you have a committee and they might feel compelled that they have to keep taking action?
Yeah.
And then we get overwhelmed?
Right, yeah.
I suppose that's valid too.
Well, I mean, I think we could, we could tamp them down if that happens.
Disassembled.
Well, no, not that, but just, you know, make it clear that we're not, we're not actively reaching out, but, you know, occasionally there are, you know, somebody that you, you feel has done something or reaches the point at which they need, they should have some recognition. And. That's my only thought on that.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I mean, if, if we're gonna go forward, I'd, I would even suggest maybe we, I don't know if that's the right name for the committee. Maybe it's the recognition committee instead of, which could cover monuments, memorials, and any other types.
I mean, it's almost like a historical committee.
No, it isn't.
Well, it will be historical if there's a plaque sitting in in the center of, you know, Central Square, I mean, that's, it'll be there for, it'll be a historical piece at some point, right?
Well, and it, and it should be something that has some significance.
Yes, yeah.
But not necessarily historical significance, it could be some other type of significance.
Yeah.
And that would be part of the, the charge for this committee to help define those things.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put it on another agenda and give it some thought in the meantime.
Okay, all right, we can carry it to the next meeting.
Thanks for doing this, Pat, I think it's very good.
Okay, I'll see what else I can find out about it. All right. And finally, to town manager report.
Yeah, uh, Matt Schirr, um, I have just three items, the first one is probably the more substantive one and I do recognize you've been sitting for over two hours, so I'll try to be brief. But it's basically been a quarter since the board established its goals for the current fiscal year and therefore recognizing the start of the new year and the start of the quarter. I thought it was appropriate to give just a overview of the goals the board had and where things stood. Again, it's not meant to be exhaustive and, uh, but it was just, you know, sort of the time to touch, touch base on them. The first one was on the ARPA funds. This was a third quarter goal, was to allocate the remaining of the uh, balance of ARPA funds. Back at your September and October meetings, you voted ten additional ARPA projects. At this point, one million dollars remains to be committed roughly uh, by the end of this calendar year, so again, everything's good there. And then manage the ongoing projects. Again, we bring in Christine Clancy monthly, she'll be here again uh, in two weeks. But as of mid-December, eighty-one percent of the appropriated project funds were procured and sixty-eight of those procure funds have been invoiced and expended. Uh, on strategic plan, this is real current, um, the goal was to um, define the scope, present it to town meeting for funded. That occurred, it was presented at the October fall annual town meeting and a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in funding was appropriated to develop the strategic plan. In terms of finalizing the RFP, um, the strategic plan committee met um, on January fourth. They're scheduled to meet two week, two weeks, two nights from tonight. And I expect within a few weeks, you'll, you'll have a, a month or so, you'll have a RFP to, for, for issuance. So that's, that's, you know, on track. And again, later on would be the um, you know, the execution of the plan, which is TBD, as noted. Uh, under storm sewer, stormwater and drainage, the, again, continuing goal is on inflow reductions and bi-monthly reports and reducing inflow, uh, DPW is managing that through its sewer capacity and restriction policy. The voluntary sump pump disconnection program is in the midst of it, there are a, a number of applicants, well, actually not everybody who's submitted will get chosen, so um, Christine Clancy is, is, is sort of sorting that out right now. And we're, you're continuing to receive monthly sewer flow reports to the select board. And they just sent you one the other day for the rainy month of December. On infiltration, it's the same thing, uh, DPW is procuring the initial phase of the manhole cover replacements to reduce infiltration. And the sewer capacity transfer credit program is, is in effect. And regarding reserve capacity, the public works director gave a capacity report at your last meeting in December. And obviously, we're at capacity under these wet conditions. Uh, on MWR options, that's the fourth quarter, that's pending. Uh, in terms of regional cooperation, um, I'm seeking a regional meeting with the municipal users of the Great Lowell Wastewater Facility to discuss the capacity limitations and the impact of the recent EPA consent order on the treatment system. And so again, I'll report that in the future. And then infrastructure, um, additional sewer infrastructure will be brought to spring annual town meeting on the warrant for the maintenance of the system. On utilities with double poles, um, we'll have monthly reports, as you know, the last one got postponed because of a climate weather condition. So we, we expect the National Grid will be here at your next meeting to give a monthly update on the double pole activity. Regarding power charging stations, uh, we're exploring grant funding for additional electric vehicle charging stations. And so you'll see that, I think, in the fourth quarter. Under, on utilities, regarding the underground utility project, that's a fourth quarter goal, um, regarding advocacy at the state level for the center. And then communication concerns, I think that's been met, as I noted earlier, you've had the monthly meetings with National Grid about the double poles. Uh, and also, we're meeting with National Grid regarding enhancements to the Concord Road electricity substation, which National Grid would, wants to launch um, this spring, uh, which is an upgrade to that. That's not a man station, but that's an upgrade to their technology and, and operations out there. In terms of lighting policy, um, this is a select board pending. Uh, this was developing a criteria implementation of a policy for advocacy lighting on municipal properties. For recognition, you've just come across this this evening, uh, for, and the ongoing consideration in terms of the recognition process as well as developing an application for providing recognition. Performance reviews, revising the town managers and the town accountants' performance evaluations, that's still pending. And so that's something that's been done in the future.
I mean, on, on the, the, the town manager one, I, I have started looking at, at the, the form and within the next meeting or so, I'll, I'll oppose changes to that. So I am working on that one.
Regarding uh, process improvements, um, gap analysis, we're just sort of focused in two areas, the health department in developing effective community assistance programs. They are using data and, and, and you sort of heard, sort of attest upon by Donna Greenwood and our acting health director this evening, about how they examine what are the programs they should be offering and how they should be uh, measured for effectiveness for interventions. And then the public works, the most notable one was the addressing the shortage of commercial drivers licensed employees. In terms of ability to hi, to hire people with those skills or, or develop people with that skill. And they've launched a program that we've had our first candidate complete that CDL license training last month.
Paul, are there other departments looking at where they might have improvement opportunities?
Yes, well, those are the, I wanted to just highlight the, the most notable ones that were, are going on. And then the second one under public works was for um, the procurement issue in terms of cap, managing capital projects. And they've sort of brought a position in-house. So that's ongoing. On parks and recreation, um, updating the directory on our website, our, our website now has a listing of parks and facilities and their features avail, available. And the, under the, updating the open space plan, the conservation commission has appointed members and is contracted with NIMCOG and other middlesex council of governments to assist with the development of an updated open space and recreation plan. On clean energy and sustainability, providing them with support, again, that's been ongoing through the select board's liaison. Facilitating communication to residents, again, all that would be done through our liaison and I, I imagine we'll probably be hearing from them relative soon, sure.
Can I just?
Sure.
I'm, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around this is done through the liaison and it's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what else.
Well, when we had this discussion, I mean, if all, if, if what we were gonna do is say it's through the liaison, then it wouldn't even be a goal, because we do that anyway.
Right.
So.
But the idea was to provide support, and so I didn't know how else we were providing support or communication.
Well, that's why I'm raising it, is there, is there something that we need to be doing proactively, asking where they need support? Or is this just really not a goal?
Well, I think when, when we first set them up, we, we did say that we would help facilitate listening sessions and we haven't done that yet. And, you know, and I am the liaison, so I will bring that up with them again to see if they, if they want to do that and if they do what it might focus on and, and when.
A listening session, them to us or just a more public one?
Public, a public one.
Yeah, okay. If, if they don't want the help, that's fine, we just, we just eliminate the goal, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, I think we, we, yeah, we decided we wanted to kind of focus on this one because, because of the importance of it right now.
Right, and because when we went through like the town meeting warrant article and stuff, it just seemed that maybe there was some more support we could give to this committee to help them raise their visibility and the education.
On recreational spaces, courts and fields, um, expanding, exploring the demand for pickleball and cricket and spaces for this. The site that was under consideration was the McCarthy School Court Site. However, that, that product has not made the cut under the capital plan committee's proposed FY twenty-five capital improvement plan, it, it, which also didn't make the school committee's highest priorities either. So it is sort of in, I mentioned it last week at the Coolest Farm Task Force meeting. And one other possibility would be the field adjacent to this building, but right now, there's not an active plan.
So the McCarthy, they didn't, they haven't formed that committee or voted or anything on?
No, what the school committee did was they, they had a, they had a list of a half dozen capital projects and the field, the, the court issue basically was number five out of six. It never, it didn't make the cut in terms of where the priorities.
Tore it up though, did they tear up the old tennis?
DPW is removing the.
The tennis courts?
The deteriorated asphalt surfaces that are out there. But nothing at this point is funded to go forward because there's no funding request to go forward. And where it's a school property, I don't have the authority to advance that. And the, the only other site that are non-school, as I mentioned, one would be perhaps Coolest Farm, but there's aggressive competition for, for the parcel at Coolest Farm Task Force, that five and a, five acre parcel, six and a half acre parcel, which five is probably dry on the, near the highway. And it's, it's just, you know, and the, you know, the other possibility would be behind this building, you know, by the, where the softball is, but then becomes another issue about where do you put the softball field?
It seems like if McCar.
Like behind the exercise thing?
Mm-hmm, adjacent to it, or, or in place of the.
Well, you're talking about a cricket field too.
Yeah, cricket field that, that would.
If something else comes up for McFarland, I, I think that we should really vet that very carefully because.
McFarland or McCarthy?
McFarland.
Okay.
Because, I mean, there's been, we, we took a chunk of the field for the exercise court and there's been a fair amount of backlash for that and like, if we have, I think we have to decide, do we want this to be a field or something else and.
Yeah, exactly, right.
And not just, right, so if we're gonna look at pickleball or cricket or anything else, I just think that's, that has to, we're gonna have to figure out how to really vet that with the community.
Right, exactly, and at this point.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen by April.
Right.
And then the McCarthy and South Row Fields and Courts, um, DPW is going to repaint the South Row Court Area. Now, I was discussing with the public works director and the super tennis schools, that will be done when the weather rise in, in the spring. As I mentioned, the McCarthy Court Area is not included in the capital plan.
Paul, does the south, if you put pickleball courts in South Row, is that far enough?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is that far enough away from your residential concern about the noise and everything?
Yeah, because that's the school, but the problem is you can't use it during the school hours.
Right.
Personnel Board Rules and Regulations, the chair of the Personnel Board provided you with an update at your November twentieth meeting. And again, ongoing support as needed. Outward communication, um, we have contracted with a company called Compete Now to review the layout and make improvements to the town's website. And we're continuing to look how we can more effectively uh, communicate through Facebook and Twitter and X and other, other means. You know, the, the, the social media is, it's almost, it's, it's, we're, we're very cautious because, you know, we, we're trying to use that as a means to get information out as opposed to getting immersed in rumblings. Yeah, exactly. And then the, the town website domain, I did meet with Ted Luder, who's our IT director, about why do we still have the town of Chelmsford dot U S domain? And how do we convert, and it's really embedded in the, many of the data links on the town's website. And right now, we just have not had the resource capacity to go in and update those links. It's something we may have to do with the liaison, with the um, intern or something going forward in terms of being able to do that. But if we just, it, it's, it's, it really is a lot of years of data, everything that's embedded in there. But right now, nothing is lost, and I think that's the concern that if, if, and I know it's aggravating because you, you see it and it pops up town of Chelmsford dot U S, even though it's no longer an act, an active domain. Uh, and then roadwork and sidewalk infrastructure, um, in February, March, the public works director will present the proposed construction season schedule for, plan for roadway and sidewalk infrastructure. Regarding fifty-four Richardson Road Highway Yard, um, things are moving along there, all the filings have been met in terms of the requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And I imagine we'll probably have Paul McKinley in and, at an upcoming meeting once we get the results back from the latest rounds of, of testing. But thus far, the, this, the latest data I sent you is everything was progressing, you know, as you saw his words, were progressing as expected. So it's, it's been an effective system. Fire station study, again, you were updated at your last meeting. And, um, you know, again, that will be moving forward. Warren Poole, at your next meeting, you're scheduled to have the conservation committee, Carl Bischoff, present the draft document. He thought he would have been here by now, uh, but in December, he asked for an additional month. And then he's gonna present you with the restriction document that will then be sent to the state for its review and then it will come back to the town and the land trust for execution. On traffic issues, um, again, we have the quarterly reports in action as needed. Obviously, you're active with the truck draft. you're active with the truck traffic issue with Representative Elliott and the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. And same thing with, with safety concerns, we present them on at least a quarterly basis and, and, as needed, as they arrive, and, along with intersections. CCA Strategy and Sustainability, Lauren Cochran was here back in November, and I'm working with her and the finance director in terms of what's needed as part of the FY25 operating budget. And the MBTA zoning, again, the support and feedback, we, we attend, many of us attended the Plante Woods Public Input Sessions, as you talked about earlier this evening, and regarding the proposed locations. On sheltering homeless and refugees, we keep monitoring the state's actions on this. Again, to date, there are no significant presence of migrant families in Chelmsford because the state has chosen, much like if you read what recently, with the facility they recently just opened in Lowell, they will not put homeless, migrant families with homeless individuals. So Lowell's getting the migrant families, and Chelmsford's getting the homeless individuals. It's basically how it's played out, because the first wave of people from Lowell came from Baraka. They were, they're housing them in the hotel in Baraka. And so right now, it seems like Chelmsford and Lowell are sort of sharing this burden, where Lowell seems to be dealing with the migrant families, and Chelmsford's dealing with the homeless individuals. So I'll keep you updated as we monitor that. On the Central Square mobile site, we keep doing the outreach. It's obviously not any kind of a priority from global companies, but we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep our efforts at it, particularly as we get into the better weather about tree planting or other beautification on that parcel, that if they're not willing to convey it, you know, can we at least beautify it. And then other issues of tree plantings will be done in the fourth quarter in terms of North Road and North Chelmsford, Middlesex Street, as well as the ongoing effort to obtain the funding from National Grid for the tree work they've done in town. That's what I have for the goals update. The other, other part of my report, the next item is citizen petition warrant articles. The close of the deadline for citizen petition articles was last Tuesday. There was one citizen petition article that was submitted. It was submitted in advance of the deadline. I sent it to Paul Haverty for counsel. He communicated directly with the petitioner, and this, and we have the petitioned article. Paul also spoke to town moderator John Curlin, and he thought the, he talked with John, he thinks the best approach would be, whatever, is to, if it would be for town meeting to take up the MBTA zoning along with this proposed petition article simultaneous. So that way, the planning board could make its presentation, and the, and the petitioner would have the opportunity to make its presentation at town meeting.
You can submit a warrant article to take a vote a certain way?
Because it's a citizen petition, there really is not a lot of discretion
Okay.
to tell the petitioner what they can and cannot do in their petition. But the reason that we, that I had the discussion with the town moderator is because this really is only looking, you know, to provide direction to town meeting regarding how they, how they want town meeting to act on a separate warrant article. So the idea was.
So it's kind of like one and the same?
It, it's kind of like one and the same. When I spoke to the petitioner, they basically were just looking for the opportunity to present a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation to town meeting, and we decided that the best way to do that was to consolidate the two articles for presentation, so that would give her the opportunity to make the same 10-minute presentation that any article sponsor would be allowed to make. The planning board article would then be voted upon, and whichever way that article results, the next article would be, become moot, because the town meeting's already acted.
Thank you.
And then the last item on my report is I'll just inform the board that another follow-up item from fall town meeting, with the town did close since our last meeting on the Elm Street parcel for conservation purposes, so that's been completed as well. So that's my report for this evening. And I just have one action under appointments. It's the reappointment of individuals to the Holiday Decorating Committee. And as you can see, there are, it's a committee of five individuals, John Floria, Eric Merrill, Vivian Merrill, Sally, Ruth Murphy, and Sharon Smith. So I'd seek your appointment to the Holiday Decorating Committee for a term ending 12/31/2024, the end of this calendar year.
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager appointments to the Holiday Decorating Committee for the one-year term expiring December 31st, 2024, as presented.
Second the motion.
There are a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zero. All right. Next, we have some meeting minutes, starting with.
One at a time, or?
Yeah.
Or all at once?
Was everybody at all of them? I guess we could take them all at once unless anybody saw anything that needed to be changed, edited.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 25th, 2023, the regular meeting minutes of December 4th, 2023, the Select Board School Committee and Town Moderator Joint Meeting Minutes of December 11th, 2023, the Tribe Board Meeting Minutes of December 11th, 2023, and the regular meeting minutes of December 18th, 2023, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're to liaison reports. George, do you have anything?
I'll say.
Okay, Aaron? Those are no. Okay. Virginia?
Um, I just have an announcement from the assessors that they asked me to read. Okay, from the assessors, fiscal year '24 third quarter tax bills were mailed out on or about December 29th, 2023. We encourage all property taxpayers to examine their bill carefully. You will find your property description and value at center-left of your bill. If you have questions about your property valuation, please call the assessor's office at 978-250-5220. The staff will be happy to discuss your situation and the factors that contribute to your property's current assessed value. If you feel that your property has been incorrectly valued, we encourage you to file an abatement request with our office. The form can be obtained from the assessor's website, or you can pick one up at the office during normal business hours. Please remember that abatement forms, we must receive an abatement request at our office postmarked no later than February 1st, 2024, in order for it to be considered. The assessor's office is also asking that you take a moment to review the yellow sheet called Property Tax Exemption Guidelines that was included with your tax bill mailing to see if you qualify for any of the listed exemptions. And you should also note that a taxpayer may qualify for multiple exemptions. Filing forms can be obtained from the assessor's office or online, and exemption requests must be received postmarked no later than April 1st in order to be considered. The assessor's office would also like to encourage veterans who receive a veteran's exemption and have not visited the assessors, not visited the assessors' office to sign their card, to please do so. The assessing staff can also meet them outside town hall or bring the card to their home for signature. If you have any questions, you can call 978-250-5220, or email frankreen@chelmsfordma.gov. That's all I have.
We should limit those announcements to three minutes. Okay, I just have a couple of things. Last Friday, I went to a court of honor for our newest Eagle Scout, Brian Miller, so congratulations to, to Brian. A couple retirements, recent retirements. Deputy Fire Chief Mike Donahue retired a couple of weeks ago after 40 years with the fire department. And last week, Sergeant Bob Murphy retired from the police department after 32 years on the force. And lastly, condolences to the family of Frank Barry, who was a longtime town meeting representative who passed away last week. So that's all I have. I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation for Ledge Road commercial truck traffic, and to review the previously held executive session meeting minutes for potential release of May 3rd, 2021, May 10th, 2021, November 29th, 2021, and May 9th, 2022, segment six.
I'll second the motion.
There are a motion and a second. George?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we are adjourned to executive session.